So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday.
Oh, not used to that. Usually it's just dead silence when I say good morning. So, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 5th, 2022 Meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Robert Kendall from Friendship Community Baptist Church in Dunkirk, if he would come forward and give us an invocation, please.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, how would be your name? We are grateful to take this moment to pause before you to acknowledge your sovereignty over all of this earth, over this country, this state, and this county. God, I pray your blessings on the commissioners and their decisions that they make today. I pray your blessings on this community and all that takes place. And I pray that during this Easter season, we would be constantly reminded of Jesus Christ, of his life, his death for us, and ultimately, his resurrection. And it's in his name that we pray. Amen.
Please stand.
What do we use?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, that was even better to hear. We appreciate that.
How beautiful.
So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the amended agenda as published and defer new business item number one to the April 12th agenda.
Second.
Have motion and second that we amend the agenda. Any discussion on that amendment? In that amended agenda, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next. I heard that. I heard that.
It's Ron already here.
Man.
It's official.
You can have my seat.
Who was the football player that wants to be president of the commissioners? Raise your hand.
He better be.
I like that, huh? No fear. Right in there. That's right.
He must be the captain of the team. He's a real leader. So, the next item on the agenda is public service announcements. I don't have any today. So.
Get these.
Oh, wait a minute. Maybe I do. So, April is flood awareness month. For those of you that live in those areas in Calver County that are flood prone, please be aware. It's also, like I said, I talked about this last week, but on the Police Accountability Board, we announced a committee to review the applicants. I think we ended up with 58 or 59 applicants to serve on that board. We decided to set up a review committee made up of four groups, representatives, to review those applications and make recommendations back to us. We did that all in an effort of being as transparent as possible. So, we look forward to having those four people step forward and getting that going. So, I think that's all I have. Alright. Next item on the agenda is proclamations. That's what I really want to get to. The first one is for the Huntington Hurricanes, nine U SMYAC champions. Commissioner Hart.
Coach Patrick, you want to come up and introduce yourself first and introduce your coaches? You got some, okay.
An official spokesperson.
Good morning. You're good. Yeah, and then everybody come up and then each one of the players, state your name, position, you play, and come on up.
So, I'm gonna state the head coaches.
Sure, however comfortable.
Alright, so head coach Patrick Praise.
You have to speak into the microphone, please.
Okay. Assistant coaches Chris Cadden, Antoine Gray, Mark Dare, John Mertich, Morgan Morgan, Mike Jenkins, and team moms Ashley Dare and Alicia Savoy. And our team members are Joshua Baker, Mason Cadden, Logan Campbell, Logan Costa, Carson Dare, Adrian Gray, Andrew Jenkins, Cody Jenkins, Cole Lewis, Luke Lewis, Colin Mertich, Dean Morgan, Brayden Savoy, Ryan Whittington, Cameron Maury, Harlan Lewis, and Bentley Boncanti.
Is that everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so before I read. Before I read this, got a couple things. So, you guys, you know, football, the ultimate team sport, right? See, I love sports, but football is my favorite. So, question, when you get up to the line, whether you're offense or defense, when can you move? That's why they're the champions. See that? See that? That's good coaching. See that? Hut, hut! It don't mean nothing right till that ball moves. There you go. Perfect. You guys, you guys had a good run there, huh? Down to Tennessee? How was that? Yeah, that's long. I tell you what, though. That is, that is awesome. And I gotta tell you on a personal note, you know, I've talked to Patrick for years and you see with mom and dad's out here. It takes the whole family and, and all the coaches here, you know, it's long, you know? It's, it has summer months. It's hot and it's running and, you know? And when Patrick first told me years ago, you guys will go down to Tennessee, I'm like, wow! Because, you know, travel baseball does and stuff like that, but for football, that's a big under. That's all, that's a lot to coordinate to get everybody down there and everybody's so important on the team. Like I say, back to ultimate team sport, if you throw a ball and he drops it, hmm, you don't get the first down. You know, you don't score. So, this is awesome. I'm very, very happy to see you guys here. You already read your names, which is good, because I butcher them terribly. So, alright, whereas the youth of Calver County represents our most treasured resource, the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. Whereas the 2021 Huntington Hurricanes, nine U D1 team, won the 2021 Southern Maryland Youth Athletic Conference SMYAC nine U D1 championship in King George, Virginia, and represent the state of Maryland at the Rocky Top Sports Complex in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, winning the 2021 nine U Thanksgiving Bowl National Championship. Whereas the Huntington Hurricanes, under, excuse me, yes, nine U D1 team, under the leadership of head coach Patrick Praise, assistant coaches Chris Cadden, Antoine Gray Senior, Mark Dare, John Murdock, did I say right? Murdock, see? Morgan Morgan, Mike Jenkins, and team moms Ashley Dare and Alicia Savoy completed their postseason record with 12 and two. Round of applause. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute and dedication to the many long hours of practice, fine performance and accomplishments of the Huntington Hurricanes, nine U D1 team. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to the Huntington Hurricanes, nine U D1 team on winning the 2021 SMYAC championship and the 2021 Thanksgiving Bowl National Championship. Be it further proclaimed that appreciation and thanks are extended to the coaches and team moms for their guidance and encouragement to the entire team, given under our hands and seal this fifth day of April 2022, signed by all five county commissioners. Yes, did you guys all get your own points? You can't eat them, you know, they're not king.
Can't spend them either.
Okay, who wants to hold this? How about you guys kind of hold that in the middle there?
Oh.
Everybody find a window. If you can see the lens, it can see you. Here we go. One, two, more, one, two. Uh, Sydney Paris, want to take a photo up here? You guys come up.
Tom's here, so she's not, yeah.
Any dads want to come up?
Wait a minute. Alright, congratulations. Very good. Thank you all. Thank you for. Yes, sir. No, you're.
Great job again, Josh.
Yeah, the real big one.
Good to see you, man. Alright. Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have crowd, do we have crowd control here today?
Oh, yeah. Y'all get stuck in the alley.
I think the kids just got a little bigger. Hey, Mike, the kids just got a little bigger. Yeah. Is that more banana bread, Rachel? Hey, Rachel, I thought that was more banana bread. I thought there was more banana bread in the bag.
You had two or three pieces.
What's that?
You had two or three pieces.
Two. Steve had two and I had ten. I could be a little more specific with that and then somebody's counting.
Feels like this one's good. Kids are much smaller.
Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Mr. Hart.
Good morning. Do we have spokesperson here to get it going? Alright, good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Alright, so we have the 11 U Huntington Hurricanes coaches. Joe Sanford, Antoine Gray, Joe Boyle, DeAndre Rawlings, and Tommy Wegner.
You were just up here. You have double duty.
Alright, we'll start with our players. Number one, Camden Ferguson. Number two, Logan Boyle. Number eight, Antoine Gray. Number eight, JJ Jones. Number fifteen, Kinistry Jones. Sixteen, Mason Porter. Twenty, Bryce Rawlings. Twenty-two, Blake Marlowe. Twenty-five, Carter Green. Twenty-six, Ganon Chedister. Twenty-eight, Didier Mariquan. Thirty-one, Walker Sisson. Forty-two, Tyce McTheaters. Forty-four, Jet Wegner. Fifty-six, Trenton Ellis. Eighty-seven, Caleb Lambert. Coach is not here today, Jonathan Marlowe, Dakota Greening, and Nick Ferguson.
Alright, do we have anybody else?
Alright, you're taller. Get in the back. Those that are gonna be tall in the future, move in front of you.
Either that or they get the three-point stand. Alright, guys, you know, I quizzed the nine U, so let's see if you guys are as ready as they are. Alright, offense and defense, you come up to that line, when can you move? That's right. See, that's why we got champions up here today, right? So, no matter how loud they go, hut, hut, don't matter, right? Not till, not till that ball moves. Alright, so, how was the trip? You guys have a great time? Yeah, what's somebody's favorite thing about the trip? Yes, sir. I like that, huh? Didn't go down there to lose. That's right, yeah. Go down there to win. Very good, very good. Well, we are very proud of all you guys. Like I say, football is my favorite sport of it all. It's just the ultimate team sport, you know? I have friends of mine, still, from when I was even smaller, well, I was always been, I was always smaller than you guys, but to this day, you know, 40 years later, you know, still, we're still great friends and still talk about that stuff. You guys will have these memories forever, so we're very, very proud of you guys. And so, got this for you, we got this for you guys today. It says where, oh, and you got your coins? Everybody got your coins? Remember, you can't eat them. Okay. Says, whereas the youth of Calver County represent our most treasured resource, the accomplishments, achievements, and abilities of these young citizens deserve the recognition and praise of their elders. Whereas the 2021 Huntington Hurricanes, 11 U D1 team, won their fifth consecutive Southern Maryland Youth Athletic Conference SMYAC 11 U D1 championship in King George, Virginia, and represent the state of Maryland at the Rocky Top Sports Complex in Gatlinburg, Tennessee, winning the 2021 11 U Thanksgiving Bowl National Championship. And whereas the Huntington Hurricanes, 11 U D1 team, under the leadership of head coach Jonathan Marlowe, assistant coach Joe Sanford, Antoine Gray Senior, Chris Ellis, Joey Boyle, DeAndre Rawlings, Nick Ferguson, Dakota Greening, and team mom Nadine Ferguson completed their first, excuse me, their postseason with a 12 and one record. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute, oh, sorry, let's get a clap, let's get a round of applause. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to pay tribute to the dedication, many long hours of practice, fine performance, accomplishments of the Huntington Hurricanes, 11 U D1 team. Lot of riding up to those practices, isn't it? Lot of long days and the heat. It's a weird season. If you start off, it's so hot. And then at the end, you're freezing, you know? It's like the hardest one to dress for, you know? It's, it's such, it's such a great sport. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that sincere congratulations and best wishes for continued success are hereby extended to the Huntington Hurricanes, 11 U D1 team on winning the 2021 SMYAC championship and the 2021 Thanksgiving Bowl National Championship. Be it further proclaimed that appreciation and thanks are extended to their coaches and team moms for their guidance and encouragement to the entire team, given under our hands this fifth day of April 22nd, signed by all five commissioners.
Right?
Find a window. One, two. One, two. Awesome. Photos back here. You don't want to take some?
Who's got a ring? I want to see a ring.
I saw one.
Let me see. I promise I will see one.
Keep your eye on it.
Nice. Nice.
Very nice. Thank you.
Did everyone get one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good job.
Hey, Mark, you forgot to call a dad's pictures that time. You forgot to call the dads. Right. Right, right.
And please make sure you're on mute. So, the next item on the agenda is another proclamation for Archaeology Month, and I believe we have some visitors in the audience to accept.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning. You know, it's pretty sad. Normally, I don't do proclamations, but they said you're the old one here, so you should do archaeology.
You know, Commissioner Hans, they did say this was the study of, you know?
Old stuff. Good morning. You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Scott Strickland. I'm the Deputy Director of the Maryland Archaeological Conservation Lab in St. Leonard.
Located at Jefferson Patterson Park. Those of you that go to Jefferson Patterson Park, it's the big building sits up there on the hills, sort of. So, they're only one in the state of Maryland, right?
Yeah, that's the State Repository for Archaeological Collections. We have about 10 million artifacts that are in our storage facility.
It's pretty cool. So, I have a proclamation. Whereas every April since 1993, the state of Maryland has celebrated the importance of archaeology to understanding the past. And whereas the stories of countless Marylanders and residents of Calver County are to be found only in the materials they left behind. And whereas it is essential to celebrate contributions made for thousands of years by those who preceded us, especially those otherwise forgotten in the text of history. And whereas archaeology offers a means to understand the lives of our forebears before being lost to the forces of sea level rise and climate change. And whereas the theme of this year's Maryland Archaeology Month, the future of studying the past, reminds us that understanding past peoples and lifestyles educates our decisions for the future. And whereas organizations such as the Maryland Historical Trust, the Archaeological Society of Maryland, the Council for Maryland Archaeology, Preservation Maryland, the Maryland Department of Transportation, the Maryland Commission on Indian Affairs, as well as several other state, local, and private entities co-sponsor this celebration. And whereas, Calver County is pleased to join in designating this month to promote the celebration of Calver County heritage. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County that April 2022 be known as Archaeology Month in Calver County and call upon the residents of Calver County to join their fellow citizens across Maryland in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Be it further proclaimed that we are pleased to designate this month to promote the celebration of Calver County's cultural heritage, given under our hands and seals this fifth day of April 2022, signed by all five. Sorry, we had a bunch of football champions in here earlier and they're all clapped out. But, and I think I saw a sign down at the park. There's some kind of an archaeology event going on this Saturday?
So, this Saturday is Discovering Archaeology Day from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So, come on down to the archaeology lab. There'll be tours, activities. I think Nicoletti's Pizza will be there.
So, yeah, it's, it's quite a facility there at the park, and as you heard, it's pretty unique. And they don't give out tours very often. So it is an opportunity for those of you that want a tour to go down and get a firsthand look.
We also have tours every Thursday at 1:00 p.m. And you can register online on Eventbrite.
Excellent. Some of us have to work. So we're not quite there for the public hearing, which is scheduled for 10:30. So I'm going to skip down and do consent. We have one item under consent today. Department of Finance and Budget Award Recommendation ITB 2022-049 Carpet and Miscellaneous Cleaning Services. Are there any additions to the consent agenda? Or corrections? Hearing none, the consent agenda will be adopted as presented. So can we sneak in the next item one? Well, that one got pushed, so it's item two.
Number two, yeah.
So we're going to go to new business item two, which is Department of Finance and Budget Health Insurance Subsidy for Retirees. Director Strand, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Excuse me as I flip to this item. Good morning, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget.
Good morning, Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Background, each year the board approves a subsidy the county pays towards retiree health insurance premiums. Discussion, other post-employment benefits, i.e. retiree health insurance, currently provided or documented in Resolution 15-21, which includes the health insurance plan policy for Calver County retirees. That policy establishes that these subsidies will be reviewed annually and are subject to change based on budgetary constraints. There are three entities that fund the county's projected 18.2 million healthcare costs. The county, the county employees, and the county retirees. Historically, the plan is managed so that the county funds about 80% of the cost and the combined employee/retiree premiums fund the remaining 20%. The county provides the following maximum subsidy levels for retiree health insurance. Retirees who retired prior to August 1st, 1994, 100% of the medical and dental premiums. There are currently 15 retirees in this category and five dependents. Retirees with the retirement date prior, I mean, date from August 1st, 1994 through June 30th, 2008, 90% of the medical and 75% of the dental premiums are paid. There are currently 91 retirees in this category and 46 dependents. Retirees who retired after June 30th, 2008, 75% of the medical and dental premiums. There are currently 198 retirees in this category and 118 dependents. Subsidies for retirees are also available to their spouses and dependents. The attached rate sheets detail the proposed monthly premiums for retirees effective July 1st, 2022. It includes the premiums for retirees with subsidies at 90% and 75% levels. It is recommended that the board take action and adopt the subsidy levels as outlined above for the plan year that begins July 1, 2022.
Questions? Comments?
And we had spoke this morning, just for clarity to everyone, that this does not harm the retirees in any way. If we could just kind of reassure that no change, no anything, that...
Correct, no changes. You do have to approve the subsidy every year, but this is the subsidy that was in the years previous.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we adopt the subsidy levels as outlined above for the plan year that begins July 1, 2022. Second.
Have a motion in the second that we adopt the subsidy levels presented by, for the plan year that begins July 1, 2022. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So we can go back, it's 10:30, to our first public hearing, which is Department of Finance and Budget Maryland Economic Development Revenue Bonds for Avenue Asbury in Solomons.
Correct.
Director Strand?
Background, the economic development article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, being the Maryland Economic Development Revenue Bond Act, or the ACT, empowers any public body to issue and sell bonds as its limited obligations and not upon its faith and credit or pledge of its taxing power and to loan the proceeds of the sale of such bonds to one or more facility users to finance or refinance any cost of acquisition or improvement of a facility or facilities. Discussion, the city of Gaithersburg will issue the bonds. However, because the bonds will refinance facilities located in the county, under federal law, the county must conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving Gaithersburg issuance of the bonds. Our bond counsel will be present for this public hearing. The facilities financed and refinanced by these bonds are used by Asbury Atlantic, Inc. in its capacity as a 501(c)(3) organization within the meaning of Section 150a4 of the code for tax-exempt purposes in its activities as an owner and operating of continuing care retirement community for senior citizens. Fiscal impact, there, the county has no liability regarding these bonds. The following language is from a similar transaction. "The bonds and the redemption premium, if any, and the interest thereon and the purchase price thereof are limited obligations of the issuer. The principal of redemption premium, if any, and interest on and the purchase price of, which are payable solely from the revenues or from any other monies made available to the issuer for such purpose. Neither the bonds nor the redemption premium nor the interest thereon nor the purchase price thereof shall ever constitute an indebtedness or a charge against the general credit or taxing powers of the issuer, the state of Maryland, or any other public body within the meaning of any constitutional or charter provision or statutory limitation. And none of the foregoing shall ever constitute or give rise to any pecuniary liability of the issuer, the state of Maryland, or any other public body. The bonds and the redemption premium, if any, and the interest thereon and the purchase price thereof do not constitute an indebtedness to which the faith and credit of the issuer, the state of Maryland, or any other public body is pledged." Conclusion, staff recommends that following any public comment, the board take action to close the record and sign the attached resolution approving the issuance.
There is no one who has signed up to speak on this event. There are two public hearings scheduled for today. All the hearings were advertised and the certificate of publication is made part of their record. Citizens were invited to call in to provide comment on either of the two hearings. We'll ask them now to press star nine if they wish to provide comment at this public hearing. Or if they're online, they can raise their hand. And there are no hands raised, so, Mr. President? So, questions from the board? Comments? Actions?
Mr. President, I move that we close the record and adopt and sign the resolution approving the issuance. Second.
Have a motion in the second that we close the record and adopt and sign the resolution approving budget adjustment. Oh, sorry, I skipped ahead. Close the record and adopt and sign the resolution approving this issuance. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes this hearing. The next hearing is Department of Finance and Budget Maryland Economic Development Revenue.
Yep.
Well, I'm sorry, but I have two number twos on my... So, number two, Sheriff's Office FY22 Budget Adjustment for Lenko Bearcat. Director Strand, Sheriff Evans?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, I'm Sharon Strand, the Director of Finance and Budget.
Introduce yourselves, please.
Good morning, Laura Kent, Sheriff's Office Fiscal Manager.
Twenty-year Sheriff Captain Mike Evans.
Background, a replacement Lenko Bearcat was adopted in fiscal year 2022 Six-Year Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, and was budgeted over a three-year project period for a total of $345,000, with one-third available and FY22 of $115,000. Based on the current fleet replacement schedule, staff recommends total funding in fiscal year 2022, which includes an increase in current which includes an increase in current manufacturing costs resulting in an FY22 budget adjustment request for the required difference. Fiscal impact, the total current estimated cost for the Lenko Bearcat is $357,500, of which $115,000 was adopted in the FY22 Capital Improvement Plan. The difference of $242,500 is requested via budget adjustment that decreases Organization 111-0661 expenditure account 27515, which is equipment 1,000 to 500 by $31,250, and account 27515 contracted services by $90,000 and increases recordation tax by $121,250 as recommended by the Department of Finance and Budget. Conclusion and recommendation, staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners close the record following public comment, approve Budget Adjustment 191, and sign the resolution.
Chair?
Commissioners, there's a lot of history. It goes back with this Bearcat, with the original one, the GAT. We really try hard, get grants for these type of things, it's not out there. And this is an essential piece of equipment that we've been putting Band-Aids on. I think someone from maintenance can tell you that. Putting Band-Aids on. And it could result, not having that piece of equipment when we're doing a certain type of operation, it could result in civilians and deputies getting hurt. And I know you don't want that. So we need to get this done, and putting it off. And I appreciate your consideration and making happen.
Ms. Kent?
Well, we have the quote that's dated March the 4th from Lenko Bearcat. And I will share with you that since the first quote, there was an increase of about $13,000. So just like anything else, prices are going up today. So the longer we wait on something like that, the higher the price will be. I will tell you that we do have 60 days to sign off on this quote to lock in at the pricing we're at now. It was a 90-day quote, and it was generated on March the 4th. The total cost is $357,351. And as Sharon mentioned, we entered into an agreement, you know, with finance, working with them, to basically split the cost three ways. That was the $115,000 that was already in the CIP for fiscal year 2022 that was adopted in. And then because of the price increase, $117,500, I believe, increased to recordation, or went up, I'm sorry, $121,250. We changed that twice. So $121,250 would come from an increase to recordation and $121,250 from two expenditure accounts with the Sheriff's Office. So basically, we were splitting the cost three ways for FY22. I will let you know that it is in the replacement schedule. We did meet with Lenko Bearcat. We also met with John Saipa. He was included in all of those meetings with us. And we do have it on the replacement schedule for fiscal year 2023. That was the original plan, was to have it be a replacement schedule for fiscal year 2023. But looking at costs and looking at the CIP and being able to do it in fiscal year 22 was something that we all agreed upon. It was actually a request when the finance department was working on it. They asked if we could discuss all of that, and we said certainly. So that's what we came up with, was to split the cost three ways.
So when you agree to purchase this, how long will it take you to get that piece of equipment?
That's a very good question. And I did call Lenko to confirm that. So it is a 12-plus-month production schedule. So if we lock in between now and June the 5th, which would be the timeframe we would need to lock in for this pricing, then we would be looking at delivery between April and June or July of 2023. So it, you know, it'll be end of fiscal year '23, beginning of fiscal year '24.
So the vehicle that you're putting Band-Aids on, you still have to put that Band-Aid on until you get the new one?
That's correct.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadway?
I know when it comes to, excuse me, some fire apparatus, for example, and I know I'm going apples and oranges here, but that's what I understand. The piece of equipment is expected for, let's say, 20 years or 25 years or something like that. And halfway through or two-thirds of the way through its life cycle, it goes in for a FRAM, full rebuild and maintenance, which in theory is supposed to allow that to continue in good operations. And I equate a little bit of the Bearcat to that because just like the ladder truck, when you need it, you need it. It has to be there. It's used very rarely, but when you do need it, you need it. When was the last time it's actually had a quote-unquote... Well, first of all, how old is it? And secondly, when was the last time it's been through a quote-unquote FRAM?
That was explored, and I'll let John Saipa and Ryan be prepared to talk about it. Or Dick, we'll start back a moment. Don't be shy.
Morning, Commissioners. John Saipa, we maintenance division chief. The Bearcat, we service vehicles on 5,000-mile increments. Obviously, it doesn't reach that, but we inspect it annually. Make sure it breaks, make sure it's roadworthy, make sure it's safe for our deputies to drive. I don't have the exact date of when we inspected it last, but kind of brought up here quickly today. But to speak on it, we do put Band-Aids on it. It's the motor. And Commissioner Gadway, you spoke about in-frames. And it's a great, if we could do that, but we're still putting the same motor back in the Bearcat, which Ford only made it for four years, and there's a reason they only made it for four years. And I'm a Ford, Chevy, Chrysler guy, I love them all. So, but that's, we inspect it annually. But major, most of the repairs on that for the 16 years, because it is a 2006 model, were, were the engine, coolant problems, electrical problems, such as that.
So you've never done a full rehab?
Negative, sir, not on that motor.
So other, so the only thing you're talking about is the mover, motor? Is that the only thing that's bad on this piece of equipment?
Yes, sir. That's the problematic, that is the problem with this Bearcat.
Is that gasoline or diesel?
Diesel.
So full engine replacement, in theory, 20, maximum 20, 25,000?
I'd have to look into it. It's, the entire engine compartment on that Bearcat is sealed for protection. So it's probably double that due to labor, intensive repairs. And again, that's an estimate. I'd have to get you an official quote.
John, you've worked on all this kind of stuff for years. If you replaced the motor in it, would it be as good as new?
Or is there's an expression, throwing good money at a bad thing? Or is this worth an investment?
Historically, the motor itself, when I came on as Division Chief, the county had between 10 to 20 of the same motors in their trucks, primarily highway vehicles. They were down more than they were on the road, and essentially during snowstorms. And that was bad. We had a shop full of them. It's a, in my time, it is historically proven to be a mechanical nightmare, and it's just, it's a matter of time if it's going to leave them on the road somewhere, especially in a critical.
So, you could put 50K in the motor and?
You're still putting the same motor back into it. That's if you can get the motor.
I was just, I, the reason why I was asking the questions, I wanted to explore the option of, there's already $117,000 set aside for that. And we're getting ready to make some very, very difficult budget decisions over the course of the next 20 minutes into the next 20 days. And having to cut things from here and there is what we're looking at the probability of. If we were to take the 117 that is already set aside for that and take, let's just even use the majority of that number as 100, and put into a full rebuild and rebuild maintenance, whatever, on this, would that be able to buy us another three to five years in order to be able to come back and look at a replacement when we're possibly in a different financial position?
From my standpoint, Commissioner, I'd rather not answer that because the motor could blow up tomorrow.
Right. But if we're putting 100 into it, that would be a new motor, new transmission, new tires, new hydraulics, and this and that. I'm just saying, I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
You guys got to speak up.
Good morning. Commissioner Dorn. Real quick, my name's Captain Cox. I'm in charge of the SOT team. I was on the team when we initially purchased the original Bearcat, and I think the motor you're talking about is putting another Band-Aid on it, essentially. When we bought this Bearcat, we were 12 members on the team. The new Bearcat will allow us to put the full operational team geared up, ready to activate in any kind of scenario that we're dealing with. And that's including civilians also. Dating back 17 years ago, we bought this Bearcat. Numerous situations, high-risk scenarios over the years I've been on, I've seen this piece of gear save many lives, including protecting my men, and I think that's very important. As I just got out of a meeting of an active shooter drill here at the courthouse, this is a key piece of gear that we need to evacuate the building, putting casualties if we had to inside here, and preparing ourselves for a worst-case scenario. And just to keep in mind, we are the first responders for two key infrastructures, national infrastructures within the county. That's the LNG plant and the nuclear power plant. So, if you add those factors in there, this is a key piece of gear that we need moving forward as a team, not only to protect the citizens of Calvert County, but protecting the men behind me. So, and I'm ultimately responsible for that. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick D. Felice, Calvert County Sheriff's Office, Commissioner Gadway, Commissioner McCaughy, and Commissioner Hart. Great questions. We started researching this project in 2018. We've had problems with the 6.0 engine, which they're referring to, that it went down on several operations, leaving us stranded, most recently about a month and a half ago in a front yard as we were trying to do negotiations with that armed subject. So, it's not a tool, it's not a toy, as Mr. Saipa alluded to. In 2019, we started giving them paperwork, and by every county standard, which you can provide the documentation to, it would be deadline. So, there's not a reboot process like a fire apparatus. Just Hartford County's going through the same issue, and they pose some of the same questions from the general public. The tool, not a versatoy, the police overtones, the militarization of police. But right now, the Bearcat is experiencing severe delamination through the front, the front windows and all the side windows. So, we've quoted those prices, and that's over $55,000 to $65,000 just to replace the front windows. The tires alone, we had to drive that up to Maryland State Police and call them some favors. There's only probably one or two mechanics in the tri-state area that can do that. And then also severe limitations with personnel. Commissioner Gadway, great questions again. As you alluded to, it has severe limitations with personnel. So, right now, that Bearcat can only, about six to seven people with full gear. With new Maryland recent case laws regarding search and seizure warrants, as well as dealing with EP or barricaded subjects, we need a bigger and a larger platform to conduct negotiations out of, bring mental health professionals in, and that severely limits our operational capability when we get to those structures. By us trying to commission it to go down, that would significantly burden the highway and maintenance and the mechanics there that have put Band-Aids on this thing, as well as that would increase our response time. Right now, we're about, not going to be any TTPs or anything like that. We have, within an hour, we can respond to any situation within the county. We'd add another probably hour if we're calling our friends from Charles or St. Mary's County. So, we've explored all the options. I understand some of the budget decisions you have to make. We wouldn't be up here asking you for this if this wasn't necessary. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, just so I can ask you, your FOP?
That's, that's correct. I'm the president of FOP.
FOP president. All right. Not to put you on the spot, but quick question for you. You guys have been campaigning for pay parity and increase in pay and everything else, as well as steps that we should be giving you guys absolutely for the wonderful job you guys do. If you had to hazard a choice of your negotiating of pay parity or the steps?
He doesn't have that choice, Commissioner. I do.
Okay.
He doesn't have that choice. He's not going to answer that question.
Okay.
And there's totally different circumstances. You're not comparing apples to apples, okay? That's totally different situation.
And Sheriff, I'm only asking about dollars and dollars.
Well, I'm telling you what's right and what's wrong, okay? That's not, that's not equal.
Okay.
Sir? I'm part of a paramilitary organization, but I'd be happy to talk to you outside of that.
All right.
So, my 20% is, is I don't want you guys to have an inferior equipment to keep the citizens, your men, and everybody. I want them to be safe. If you're coming to me and telling me that this vehicle is, is a problem, then I have to put my trust in what you guys are telling me. I'm not, I'm not going to vote against something that you guys need. And I'm already worried that we have to wait a year to get the piece of equipment and it breaking down in a situation between now and then. So, I mean, that's my 20%.
We do have two callers.
And real quick, John Saipa? Hey, John, because you're a mechanic, so in my line of work?
First off, I'm not a mechanic. I have mechanics. I have mechanics.
Okay. But you, but you, you're, so, you know, like in my line of work, my compressors have to run 365. So, I've had guys say, you're going to pay me now or pay me later. If we're not doing this today, are we doing this tomorrow?
It's not a matter of if, it's when.
Okay.
That's my standpoint.
And, okay. And as far as business-wise, so then it's going to cost us more? If I'm saying this right, it's going to cost us more to nickel and dime it today and then go ahead and pony up and pay whatever costs are down the road? I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
Historically, the longer you keep a vehicle, the maintenance budget grows with it.
Do we have any other vehicles that are currently waiting for replacement out of the monies that's left over from this fiscal year?
I can't answer that, Commissioner. I don't believe, I believe all the vehicles have been ordered for FY22.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion if I could.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Director Strand, explain to me a little bit about the recordation tax.
The recordation tax? So, when we budgeted FY22, we budgeted very conservatively, and we have seen an increase in recordation tax due to how the housing market has been and the fastness of how's it selling. And so, we're comfortable with raising the recordation budget that we currently have. We're not actually raising the tax on recordation. We're just raising the budget that we anticipate to receive.
So, you're just taking the funds out of the recordation tax to cover this expenditure? There's no dedicated fund out of recordation tax?
No, it's not dedicated at all. We just, we have seen an increase, and already through April, we're ahead of schedule. So, we do have surplus coming in. So, we're using that as a revenue source to fund the portion of the Bearcat.
And if you don't mind, if I could just let you know, if we took the CIP of $115,000 and we were to sign the quote with Lenco Bearcat, we could use that as the deposit. The balance is not due until the delivery of, of the Bearcat. So, I know that we're going over these adjustments right now, and the Sheriff's Office has, is pulling from two expenditure accounts that we can afford to pull from to make up that, that third portion. But I just wanted to let you know that part of the decision-making process is if we can use the dollars that are already set aside for FY22 in the CIP, then we can sign the quote and we can put the deposit up to have everything started. It'll be added to the build schedule, and the completion will be between April and June of 2023.
But in order for us to encumber the funds, all of the budget needs to be available in fiscal year 2022.
Once you make the decision, it doesn't matter which fiscal year, it's, the decision's been made, so.
As Captain Cox alluded to earlier, in the necessity to respond to two specific locations in the county for assistance, if and when that were to, God forbid, ever happen, is there any possibility that those, either of those two agencies is willing to assist in kicking money in for that? Exelon or Dominion?
The reimbursables. It's not something that we've discussed with them.
I mean, Dominion already has a substantial contract with the Commissioners and Sheriff's Office. I can't imagine if it's over $2 million or something, they would want to add any more to that.
So, for, for the audience out there watching, I think in the very near future, you're going to understand why you're getting these questions from the Commissioners. You know, it really has nothing to do with not supporting the Sheriff's Office or not wanting to make sure that they have the equipment needed to, to handle their responsibilities. But it's going to come to light very soon why these tough questions are being asked of the Sheriff's Department today. And so, that's why, just so any of you out there watching, it's not, it's, there's a big issue coming. We have two callers online.
We have one caller in person and one on the line. Joseph Cormier has signed in to speak. Floor's been open for public comment. Those physically in attendance will be asked to speak first. Virtual participants who wish to speak, please press star nine or click the function to raise your hand. And please be patient until it's your turn to speak. Virtual participants will be identified by the last four digits of their phone number or the name on their screen, and unmuted one at a time. Speakers are asked to state their name, address. Those who are providing comment as individuals will be allocated two minutes, and speakers who are the designated representative of group will be allocated five minutes. Mr. Cormier?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Joseph Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf of myself this morning. I, I was a deputy sheriff for three years in Virginia before I was a stay-at-home dad after I got back from Iraq. So, I have nothing but respect for the first responders that are in this room or who are out in the county who serve us. My concern was with the, the budget item, says it was from coming $117,000 from the Program for Student Safety Program. I'm not understanding how this particular device is going to serve that program line item. Again, I, we hear a lot of ifs today. There's no grants today. There might be grants next month. We got to get the money in now. We're not going to get it for a year. We got to be tight about our budget. You know, Mr. McCaughy, you said when they come and give you something, you're trusting them. When the Board of Education comes, we give them questions the same way. We trust those professionals, but we also have to be conscious about our dollars and cents, about where things are coming from. Our taxes are paying for this, and I hope that this is a need and not a want. If we serve the tri-county area, that's great, but we got to make sure that we're serving ourselves here in the county budget-wise first. We've got the Police Academy Bill to be Board, that's still unfunded. The Blueprint for Maryland is still unfunded, coming down. I don't know where we're going to get the money to do all this stuff, is my only concern. So, please keep that in mind as we vote today and see if we can't, you know, kick this can until maybe the next sheriff might have a different funding strategy or might have a different priority for CIP. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And joining us virtually is N., is Nancy Coats. If you would please state your name, whether you're?
Good morning. Hi, my name's Makita Coats, chiming in on behalf of Calvert County Prism. I want to just thank everyone who spoke so far, and I just want to say that I agree with the last speaker, that this is a large budget item, and the Sheriff's Department has failed to answer simple questions about how this vehicle has been effective. I feel that we've been asking questions, or in this meeting, there's been questions asked about their effectiveness and timeliness of response and, and other things that they've done. And we haven't even been able to get those stats from them, yet they're asking for such a large sum of money for a vehicle that we, as citizens, have not really seen them use except for in intimidation situations. So, is this a necessary expense? It doesn't appear that way to me. In addition to that, I don't feel that the Sheriff's Department has presented themselves in a way that honors them the right to receive this amount of money from the citizens today as they cannot answer questions regarding their effectiveness in the county. Thank you.
That's everyone who's signed up to speak.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Because of the other budgetary items that we're looking at over the course of the next hour or so, is it possible to leave the record, I'm not sure exactly how, but leave the record open on this for a week and come back and finish up discussion on it next week if there's any additional public comment, one way or the other on it?
It's the pleasure of the board.
Well, I'd like to make a motion.
Could I just clarify something if it's okay? The safety for students was the original memo that had been generated, but the dollars that the Sheriff's Office is putting forth for this are actually coming from two of the expenditure accounts, not from the balance sheet for safety for students. I just wanted to clear that up. And just a reminder that the $115,000 is already adopted in the CIP for FY22, and the $121,250 is the Sheriff's Office portion that is coming from those two expenditure accounts, leaving the $121,250 from, as an increase to recordation. So, one other item that might be worth mentioning when I was talking about the delivery is, and this is something we would have to talk to Finance about as well, is we're talking about a couple of months between fiscal year 23 ending and the beginning of fiscal year 24 to actually take delivery of this item. So, if that's something to think about, it would allow us to sign off on the quote at the pricing that is currently quoted to us because we have that 90-day window. It would allow us to use the $115,000 as the deposit and then possibly push the delivery to July 1 or after 2023 date, which is the beginning of fiscal year 2024. And again, I know we're talking about putting a Band-Aid on it, but it's an April delivery versus a July delivery. So, it's not that many months. I would just ask you to please consider that.
So, then, the 90,000 out of contracted services?
Yes.
So, you didn't spend as much in contracted services this year as you had anticipated?
Well, it's, it is the 111-0661, so it's not 111. It's not the Sheriff's Office contracted services. It is the, that is correct. We are not spending as much. And part of the reason for that is the Axon agreement, that we, we have taken on a new five-year contract with Axon. And Sharon is aware of this. We've had meetings on this. Because of the way the contract is set up, it allowed us to have additional contracted services budget remaining for this year only. So, it just happened to work out that the way the contract is written for the next five years, we ended up with a window of opportunity, and that's, that's the reason the memo was adjusted.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Clarification. The document that's available for the public to view shows public safety for students program increasing $117,500. Is that not accurate?
It has, it was adjusted to $121,250 because of a price increase and the two expenditure accounts were selected.
So, what's been available to the public is not, what's being asked to be considered today?
So, so John's point is that what we're, what we have in front of us is not what was advertised to the public. So, what does that?
Wouldn't we have to re-advertise?
We could continue this public hearing to another date and time without having to re-advertise, but it would require providing the public the information that you're being asked to move on for two consecutive weeks. So, that would put us on the agenda for the, is it the 26th? 26th of April.
So, our issue is, for those of you out there listening, we advertise public hearings. We have to advertise in a public hearing the facts that are going to be presented that day in that case. And the issue that has arisen here is that the information that was provided to the public when we advertised this hearing is not the information that's in front of us today and of a decision. So, the advice of our attorney is that we?
Continue this. Continue this till April 26 at 10:30 for a continuance of the public hearing, and we'll make the public avail, make the document available to the public as it's been presented today.
So, do you understand that?
Is that just a consensus? Do you need a motion?
Need a motion.
You'd need a motion, but...
So, we need a motion.
I had a couple other things before you close, sorry, President.
Sure.
In response to some of the public comment, because again, we're talking about...
Oh, wait a minute. We're not going to do that.
Okay, no.
No. You're not going to, we're not going to allow you to comment against somebody else's public comment.
Okay. I was just giving you some more background on grants and information we were receiving.
We're going to do this again, Nick, so you'll have time at the next...
Okay, I just want to make sure that your reform is...
Yeah, yeah. I just can't, I can't allow a public debate.
Totally agree. Sorry, my progress rules are off.
That's okay. I understand. So, gentlemen, what we have in front of us now is a motion to continue this hearing for two weeks, so we can advertise the correct data for where the funding is coming from.
So, because the board doesn't meet on the 19th, we're going to ask that you continue it to the 26th of April at 10:30 a.m. in the same location.
Right. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That we leave public record open to April 26 on this matter in order to be able to allow for proper advertisement of alterations to the, to the purchase. Is that suitable?
Yes, more than suitable.
Second?
So, I have a motion and a second, that we continue this hearing until April 26, so we can do adequate public notification of the facts. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. We'll do this again.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, sir.
Next item on the agenda is new business number three, Department of Finance, Board of Education. Edie's here.
Good morning. Edie, did they get you your own parking space yet?
Not yet.
Tom Jones, we need to take care of that. Edie needs a parking spot. We have her here every week, so.
Does that need a public hearing?
Maybe.
It might, right.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, so background. The Board of Education is requesting the Board of County Commissioners approval of a budget adjustment for federal awards and other programs that were not outlined in the Board of Education or BOE's operating budget in fiscal year 2022. The attached memo details the request. In summary, the BOE requests to increase revenue slash expenditures as shown in Attachment A. There's no fiscal impact to the county for this action. Staff recommends the BOC approve the budget adjustment.
So, good morning. I'm Edith Hutchins, Chief Financial Officer for Calvert County Public Schools, and what you have here is a request to increase our restricted budgets by 314,000 as outlined in the memo for some additional funding we've received from federal and state sources for this fiscal year.
So, can you sort of run through there, please?
The items?
Yes. People listening in can't see what we have in front of them.
So, there is a minor adjustment here of 15,000 for the English language grant under Title III. There is also the American Rescue Plan homeless funding of almost 90,000. It's 89,857. There is some Safe Schools funding, which we've received before. This year, the award is 25,000. There is infant and toddler funding of 55,000. There's a Johns Hopkins grant of 10,000 to be used for the Mesa program, as well as a childcare stabilization grant of 119,800 to be used to assist our families in the county who are using our before and after care, for, among other things, assisting with tuition payments for that program.
It's quiet. Questions?
Yes.
So, just, sorry, go ahead. Well, just for the record, for everybody out there listening, this is a budget adjustment. So, this is money that was received by the Board of Education from other sources that's got to be captured in their budget. So, it's just an amendment to include money they've already gotten and already spent, probably.
No.
No?
No.
That was a test. Can Mr. Gadway?
Good morning, Edie. How are you doing?
Good morning. I'm good. How are you?
Outstanding. Years ago, when I sat down with my first accountant after opening a business, I said, here's how I spent the money for the business this year. And she looked at it, and she shook her head at me, and she said, no, 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 you can't do that. And what that was, is utilizing the term "other" to describe where money was being expended. And they said the IRS doesn't buy the word "other" and whatnot. So, in here, we've got 11%, and seeing where the money's coming from, we've got 11% of the monies coming in that are actually going to salaries and wages. But yet, 53% of the money, over half of the money, is going to quote-unquote "other instructional costs" and fixed charges. And I couldn't find in the information here what is under those "other instructional costs" and fixed charges to help me wrap my head around it.
So typically, other instructional costs include costs for contracted services for consultants who will come in and provide training, staff development for our employees, as well as equipment. It is used to pay the cost for registration fees for staff development for programs that our employees will attend to improve their skill sets. Let's see, what else? Those are the two, the three biggest things. The consultants, the equipment, and then the staff development costs, as well as mileage.
Speaking of mileage...
Should have brought up mileage.
Speaking of mileage, just a quick, roughly 600,000 miles a year is reimbursed for mileage. That's to the moon and back one and a half times. That's a lot of miles for a small county. And I'm sure, is there, how does mileage reimbursement work when it comes to the Calvert County Public Schools?
So, we have supervisors who go to schools on a daily basis to do observations and evaluations. We have principals and other administrators who attend meetings. We have other staff doing home visiting services for our residents, home and hospital teaching. So, there are different reasons that employees are traveling and incurring mileage. One of the things that we've done over the past few years is we've acquired some vehicles that we encourage our employees to use, their CCPS-owned vehicles. Therefore, we don't pay mileage for that. They use the fuel that is in the pump, if you will, on-site, so it's costing us less than if the employee is being reimbursed for purchasing fuel at the going rate at a public station. So, that's one of the things we're doing, but we don't have enough vehicles, obviously, to accommodate everything that employees are doing in this time of year. Recruiting is a big thing, so we have a lot of employees who are out doing recruiting, trying to attract teachers to teach for us next year. So, there are a number of reasons why our employees incur mileage.
All right, I just saw, I mean, there's a lot of money being spent there. Anyway, off that. What about fixed charges? You talked about the "other instructional costs." What about the fixed charges in reference to this transfer?
So, fixed charges includes health insurance premiums, life insurance premiums, workers' compensation costs, social security taxes, retirement costs. So, those are the five big items that are listed under fixed charges. And it's basically just benefits for our employees.
So, that's not under salaries and wages? That's under fixed costs?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have a question? Yeah, real quick, back to the mileage. I would think that it would cost you less to pay the mileage to somebody using their own vehicle than you owning the vehicle, paying insurance on it, and all the other charges. Wouldn't it be cheaper the way you're doing it?
To pay the mileage?
Yeah, just to pay somebody mileage because they're using their own vehicle. You don't have to put brakes on it. You don't have to put fuel in it. You don't have to buy a vehicle. You don't have to pay insurance. I would think that...
So, why are we on vehicles?
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I think the mileage is actually the cheaper way to go.
If somebody, if their job every day is to go out and do some of the things you mentioned in there, long-term, that can't be cheaper.
No, mileage does add up.
But they're not doing it every day, right?
Some people are. Some people are out every day.
1.5 million over, 1.5, a little over 1.5 million a mile in reimbursement over five years. That's a lot.
There are people in a job every day in their personal cars. They're reimbursing mileage every day.
If that was the case, it wouldn't be.
You shouldn't be doing that.
I mean, there's some people out there, they're getting 300 or 400 a month mileage reimbursements, which is a lot.
Yes, particularly if you have teachers, like a diagnostic prescriptive teacher, who may be assigned to two or three schools, or a psychologist assigned to multiple schools, and they're visiting multiple schools per day. So, we don't pay mileage for the employee traveling from home to their home, their base location. But then, once they leave that base location, they get mileage for every site visited beyond that.
Right. I'm sure the cost of gas is going to start really driving that rate up. What is it these days now?
58?
So, currently, the reimbursement rate is 58.5 cents a mile.
Okay. I remember when it was like 52, and going way, way back, and it was like in the 20s.
No, and we would expect that that is going to increase with the way our prices are increasing.
So, you all have analyzed all these employees that drive every day and buying them a vehicle and the cost analysis on that?
Buying a vehicle for each employee.
For those people that are on the road every day?
Pool, pool vehicles.
Well, yeah, but they have employees that are on the road every day, and they're paying them mileage. I get the point that one day, a supervisor's got to go here and do something, and the rest of the week, he's in an office. I get that. But an employee that every day, their job is to be on the road, that just seems crazy to me.
Well, you have the, again, the fact that we've started by buying vehicles, but when you buy vehicles, you have to have some place to store them. So, right now, we have four vehicles that are consistently parked on the front lot. We don't have a big parking lot. We've got a system or a fleet of school facilities vehicles. We have vehicles that are being used by our construction administrators. So, we do have vehicles for specific purposes, but when it comes to the general employee population, we only have a handful of vehicles that we just purchased within the past two years. So, when you look at expanding that fleet, we have to also look at storage and maintenance, and how many employees do we need to hire to maintain that fleet. So, we're just starting with that.
And the other thing I noticed is, when you guys do your lease slash purchase comparison to look at whether or not you're going to lease the vehicle versus purchasing, how is that comparison done? Is that also looked at? Because, for example, I noticed that mileage fines are being paid on leased vehicles for going over the allotted leased amount.
We've only had one leased vehicle, which we don't have anymore. At one point, we had a leased vehicle for the superintendent. And yes, you do have restrictions on the usage for that lease, but we ultimately ended up purchasing a vehicle for the superintendent's use. So, no, that's the only lease, if you will, that we had for vehicles.
You did purchase some. Did you ever end up purchasing any buses? Does the county actually own any?
We have not.
You haven't done that yet?
No.
Okay. I knew there was talk of it.
We had talked about purchasing maybe one regular-sized bus, one small bus, particularly for doing the out-of-county runs for our students who have to go to Baltimore. We did consider that option, but we didn't purchase any.
Okay. Going back to the Attachment A, when I see federal money coming in, state money coming in, and Johns Hopkins money coming in, that's nice because it helps alleviate some of the pain on the taxpayers here. Federal money is still tax money. State money is still tax money. We've all put into that big pool at some point in time. I just, I look at it and I see, I wish that we could figure out a way to spend more than 11% on the educators that are the crucial role in getting this information to the students. You know, and when we're, when we receive money like this, only sending 11% of it towards salaries and wages is, I don't understand all of it. I'm trying to learn, but 11% out of 300, almost 15,000, just, I wish that more of it could go toward the teachers and educators that are responsible for it.
Typically, when it comes to the salaries, if we're paying for salaries with grant funds, it's to provide something additional, in addition to what we currently have. And it needs to be something that doesn't put us in a position of dealing with cliff funding. When you start dealing with salaries, if the money goes away, then we have to then consider, do we keep the position and try to cover it with local dollars, or do we do oppositions that we could do without if the funding went away?
Any other questions? Action, motion?
Real quick, I got to ask the question. School board's here, kind of. Does the school board, does the school board still have the 10-person limit in place? Are you aware?
As far as I'm aware, there's no change with that.
Okay. Because at the last one, there, the last few meetings, they've been maxed out at 10 speakers. There's, at the last meeting, there was people crossed off and other people brought in, and this and that. It seemed like the last meeting got a little bit sparky as far as who was speaking, when they were speaking, how they were speaking, and everything else. And somebody over at the Board of Ed said, well, it looks like due to COVID, we're coming to the end of the 10-person, so I was excited to hear that, but didn't know what that meant. So, I'll be excited to hear what that means as far as due to COVID now almost ending, they'll be able to limit the 10, lift the 10-person limit.
Well, some of the people that were scratched off, I believe, were asked to leave.
It's my understanding that there were about three people who were asked to...
Yeah, I was watching the meeting, yes. That's, I saw the scratch off people. I think that's what that was.
You know, but it's been quite a few where that 10-person has been maxed out quite a few times in a row now, so.
So, if people act up and get crossed off, it allows more speakers. Right, right?
Totally true.
Through some sort of logic, yes, sir. Correct.
Yeah.
Well, let's just hope we get back to a place where we learn to talk again.
Right.
Because the county I grew up in, we talked, you know. So, let's hope we, let's hope we get back to that.
Mr. President?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Board of Education's request to increase revenues and expenditures of the FY 2022 restricted budget as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I would just like to, I will vote for this, but I would really like to see, next time around after this week, expanded categories for other and fixed charges and stuff like that, so we can see actually a little bit more upfront where that money's going.
Well, the categories are identified and defined by the Maryland State Department of Education. What we can do is provide you with more details about the accounts within the categories. That tells you what the money is being spent on specifically.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right. Director Strand, you're up again.
Up again. The Board of Education, BOE, is requesting the Board of County Commissioners or the BCC approval of a budget adjustment for funding that was not outlined in the Board of Education's operating budget in fiscal year 2022. The attached memo details this request. In summary, the Board of Ed requests to make the following changes. Increase the local appropriation revenue account by 1.3 million, and increase their contracted bus routes by 994,427, and their special ed transportation account by 305,573. The Board of, the Board of County Commissioners approved budget adjustment 181 on March 29, 2022, to account for the 1.3 million in additional funding one time provided to the Board of Education. Staff recommends that you approve this budget adjustment.
So, just for clarification, this is the 1.3 that we already have acknowledged for the bus contractors?
Correct.
Just for information for everybody out there listening. This was the adjustment to salaries and hours and insurance subsidies?
The benefits trust, but it's primarily for the hours for the drivers.
It didn't cover insurance, right? They didn't, it didn't cover insurance, right?
Now, we, and we're increasing the contribution for the trust, but this particular item is not for that.
Right, right. Is this?
Uh, yeah, but.
This is the one point one?
One point three.
I'm looking at a breakdown of one point one. Is that?
Great. So this memo was originally broken into two sections that was provided by the Board of Education. The first part of it was already brought forward to you all. And then in the second paragraph is the one point three, one oh two eight nine, that's requesting the county for the budget adjustment. And, but we had to postpone that portion of their, their memo until we were able to publicly, I mean, have a public hearing to adjust the county set of books in order to fund the Board of Education, their one-time funding for the bus driver contract.
So this is pretty much all about the bus driver contract?
Correct. The other items have already been brought forward and approved.
And that's the stuff on the back page, the one point one million?
Yes, you all have already seen that and we've, you've approved that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is all about the bus contractors.
I'm glad to hear that.
No mileage reimbursement or anything.
I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that because I was gonna ask, I was just gonna say ditto on the other instructional costs and fixed charges on the bus contract, because that's what I was reading here on the chart. So I'm glad that wasn't the case, because that one would have been interesting.
No, page two was strictly restricted programs.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion?
Okay, I will. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt and pass the Board of Education's request to increase revenues and expenditures of the FY 2022 unrestricted budget as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm gonna head out now. You got this?
So the next testimony agenda is a presentation from the Department of Finance and Budget, FY twenty-three, Staff Recommended Budget Follow-Up. This is not gonna be as much fun.
No.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Beth Richmond, Deputy Director of Finance and Budgets. Background. The annual budget process progresses in three phases. The first phase is the Staff Recommended Budget, or S R B. The Department of Finance and Budget had a public hearing on March twenty-second to present and receive public comment on the Calver County S R B for fiscal year twenty-three. Phase one is complete. Discussion. Phase two is the Commissioner's Budget. There will be a public hearing for that budget on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. To meet the advertising deadlines for the public hearing and prepare the budget document for publication, we request that the Board of County Commissioners, or B O C C, assistance with finalizing the plan during the April fifth meeting. To facilitate the discussion, Finance and Budget has attached a presentation. Fiscal impact. Finance and Budget presented a, presented FY twenty-three S R B as a balanced budget, but requested changes could have an impact. Conclusion recommendation. Staff seeks the B O C C's guidance on items to be included or excluded to finalize the Commissioner's Budget.
All right, so the purpose of this meeting, just to reiterate, is to discuss updates to the Staff Recommended Budget with the Board of County Commissioners for the Commissioner's Budget, discuss topics reoccurring for further consideration, review the budget schedule, and solicit changes from the Board to the FY twenty-three Staff Recommended Budget presented in public hearing, to be, be presented in public hearing on May seventeenth. So currently, this, these are some of the changes that we have right now in the Staff Recommended Budget going into the Commissioner's Budget. We've increased the library salaries for the steps and the COLA, and we've had some other salary savings in the general fund. Currently, we have to add a hundred and eighty-nine thousand for the election board, because now we'll be having two elections in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And we've also backed out some, was it four?
Four paramedics.
Four paramedics and one of the vehicles that they've requested, that they requested for fiscal year twenty-three. So we've had a reduction in expenses of one point two million dollars. In revenues, we've backed off a little on recordation tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And the reason being is looking at the market, the market is still strong right now, but as the federal government continues to increase the interest rate, we're gonna see the market slow down. And that's what's anticipated. So right now, currently, the interest rate is close to five percent on borrowing for mortgages. So we're gonna see that increase. Uh, real property tax, we do have new, we have figures that were received in January on group three of our property taxes assessments. So we were able to increase our property taxes revenue by the two point seven, and income tax is still strong. We're still receiving positive word and positive feedback from the state of Maryland, their revenue section of how the strong income tax is. Um, and we're seeing it again in what we're receiving. So it's lining up with our budget and potentially could exceed our budget for twenty-two. But we still are on the conservative side of income tax. So all in all, getting down to the positive changes are the reductions in the expenses and the increase in revenues forecasted for the twenty-three. We're looking that we have a surplus of about three point nine million dollars, almost four million dollars going forward to work with. So that's the positive.
Oh, you didn't want me to make my speech?
You can.
So I just don't want anybody out there to be deceived that we've got a four million dollar surplus that we can play with, because what she doesn't include in her Staff Recommended Budget is all the ask.
And that's coming up.
And she's getting ready to do that, and you all have heard me repeatedly say lately that those asks are in the neighborhood of twenty million dollars. That's why we were so hard on the sheriff's office this morning. So, continue on.
All right. So this next slide, this slide kind of outlines what you have seen, what you have seen before under the Staff Recommended Request. So we have new staffing requests that was eight hundred and fifty thousand in the Staff Recommended Budget. It's been reduced to three hundred and eighty-one thousand in the Commissioner's Budget. New initiatives for techni- technology services has been reduced by a hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred. New initiatives excluding technology services has been reduced by seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And the Board of Education is still their initial request. And what that means is they originally asked for roughly a hundred and forty-three million. We funded them at a hundred and thirty-eight point six, so that is the balance of it. The reason for these reduction is the, um, staff has worked with the department heads along with the county administrator in getting these items reduced. Things that could be wait, wait, things that people could wait on are pushed out to another year. This next slide, these items here have been included already in the Staff Recommended Budget. So we still are including the eight E M Ts, the four facility coordinators for Ward Farm, and the ground maintenance workers for, for Ward Farm. Things that have been taken out of this from the Staff Recommended Budget is four positions for the Chesapeake Hills Golf Course, and that's due to the delay in the building of the golf course. And Career E M S has removed four paramedic positions.
And just for my fellow commissioners, if they're forgotten, the, uh, the eight E M Ts that are on there, they're currently on the job, but we were, we've been using CARES funding to fund those positions. So if we did not put those eight positions in there, we'd have to pull those crews out of the departments. And that, you know, we put them there for a reason, that reason still exists. So that's why those eight have to stay in. And the park people, we opened up Ward Park, and you can't open it up without some staff. So just for the board to, as we're going through this.
So on this slide, there are seven positions presented for your consideration. We did not include these in the Staff Recommended Budget, so they would be part of that, you know, the potential use of that three, excuse me, four, four million dollars that Sharon spoke about. But since we did this initial presentation, this request has been reduced by four point nine five positions and about four hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Here are the remaining, excuse me, T S associated items for your consideration. This list has been reduced by about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Mr. President, I have to recuse myself for slide eight.
Okay. But the record show Commissioner Hart's recused himself due to a conflict. You can continue.
Here are the remaining non-T S associated initiatives for your consideration. This list has been reduced by about seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Three items by themselves make up eight point six million, the B O E at five point four million, and the market adjustment of three point two million, which Sharon will discuss on the next slide. So the Sheriff's Office and Detention Center have requested a market adjustment comparing our salaries to the state of Maryland and to other local jurisdictions within southern Maryland. The, the market adjustment is for sworn deputies, and it's not for, um, support staff. When using, um, the benefit factor for the sworn deputies for the Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center, we use a twelve percent benefit rate. So it comes to about three point two million dollars for a full year. Um, we have been in discussions with the Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center about phasing this in in the beginning of January, so there would only be one point six million dollar impact to the FY twenty-three budget. I'd also like to point out that Mako has done a survey for county employees for market adjustments and comparing Saint Mary's and Charles and County together. And, um, if this was to be implemented, it would be about ten more, ten point eight million dollar for a market adjustment, a seventeen percent marketing adjustment for county employees.
So just, I feel like I'm driving this boat, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Um, just for those of you out there that are listening, make sure you understood what Sharon just said. You know, the, the Sheriff's Office came to us originally because they understood there was disparity in pay in the region. What we then did was ask the consultant to do a comparison of our own employees, those other twelve hundred county employees. And what we found was that our county employees are probably more underpaid than the Sheriff's Office. And in good conscience, we cannot give the Sheriff's Office an increase without giving our own employees an increase. So I want to thank the F O P and Colonel McDowell. Yesterday, we met again, and we agreed that to, the only way we can make this work, and it's still gonna be a challenge, is that we, uh, not implement the pay increase until January one, but on July one, we would do the COLA and the steps, restore back the lost step and put in the step that is do them. And so we've still got work to do to make that work, but at least delaying it six months gives us, um, some cushion to have this done. And, um, so just want to make sure everybody out there listening understands what's going on here.
Very well said, Mr. President. Thank you. That was my sentiments exactly.
Yep.
So possible savings and funding ideas. Um, we could reduce operating expenses. And you can see on the chart or the screen, um, different values associated with percentage decreases. This is not a full operating expense calculation. It, it excludes things like benefits or contributions to O P E B or pension benefit contributions, utilities, contracted services, things that you, we really can't reduce. So, um, so that's bullet point number one. Currently, we have a health premium balance. As you remember, back in October, the county did receive a health premium benefit from our vendor. Um, our contributions that we made to pay the premium was higher than what, what was actually needed as expenses coming in from our employees using the benefit plans. Also, we can, third bullet point is reduce the Board of Education funding that we currently have in the budget at one thirty-eight point five to the M O E, the new M O E calculation of one thirty-four point seven. And that would be a savings of three point eight million dollars.
Sharon, just to back up to number two, I'm sorry, that, Commissioner Galloway.
Go ahead.
Um, that health insurance premium, that's just savings. That's not based on employees premiums.
Correct. That is just the county portion. The employees have another bucket. And as some of you may recall, we did give a benefit holiday for the employees and two in December and one in January, and that, their portion was used for that payment.
Right. I don't want the employees out there to think that we're taking their premium that they paid in and trying to use that to balance the budget. We are not doing that. So just want everybody to understand.
Correct. This is strictly just the eighty percent for the county and the twenty percent into sitting in another account for the employees.
Thank you. Commissioner Galloway, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine. Uh, over the last, I'm gonna say, two or three months since the news story broke on the front page of the recorder, Dr. Curry asked for nine million more. I have seen so many numbers. It's went from like nine million, eleven million, seven, you know, it just, that, that number keeps... It's like old whack-a-mole. Is the actual minimum M O E thirty-eight, ten, nine, oh, five? Is that the actual, if it's, how much is it per student, I guess is my question? Is that the eighty-nine hundred?
So we have to fund at least what we funded last year per student.
Per student, right.
Correct.
And we're based on fifteen, three, thirty-three per student this year?
Correct.
What is that actual dollar amount per student? Is that the eighty-nine or something like that, eight thousand, nine hundred dollars?
That I don't have off the top of my head, but I have it calculated, and I can get that information for you.
I, I, can I, may I try to help? I think he's referring to the county's appropriation versus the state.
Right.
It's the split for your benefit.
Okay, correct. So if we take the fifteen, thirty-three, and that turns into a dollar value of how much per student? Right, and I don't have that with me right now.
Right.
So according to the new M O E calculation by the state, and there was a new one that just came out, but this is the one that was in effect of, of April of twenty twenty-one, we would have had to give the Board of Education a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. But since we always overfund, or not overfund, but exceed M O E, our, our contribution or our portion of M O E is now the one thirty-four point seven, because that's what we gave last year. So that becomes our base.
But, and you, and she has built into the budget what the old fund, funding formula calculation would have been, which is M O E plus.
Correct. We have built into the budget right now a hundred and thirty-eight point five million, and the Board of Education is requesting a hundred and forty- and the Board of Education is requesting 143 million. If we were to reduce them back to what we have to contribute to them, we would save $3.8 million. But we still have, they are still asking for $5 million more than what's in the staff recommended budget of the 138.5.
All right. I'm trying to figure out how to ask a question. If we're required to pay them, and let's just use the number, none of us seem to know what the number is exactly, but $8,900 exactly to the penny per student per year. That 8,900 is the MOE times the amount of students that they have, with the exception of this year because we have to average the last three years, take out 2020 because of COVID. The state legislator changed all the rules, which means this year, we have to pay them for 15,333 students when they only have 15,048. So they're already getting a bonus couple million extra above and beyond what, in theory, it should be per student, per pupil. So I guess where I'm going with this is if the MOE is $8,900, then the minimum amount we have to pay them is 8,900 times 15,333 equals, insert number here. That's the absolute minimum we have to pay them.
As long as it is above the 134.7, which we funded last year.
That stays off.
Correct.
So if the population of students goes down, we still have to give them more money per student?
Mm-hmm.
The same that you provided last year.
That was the cautionary tale when, remember, when enrollment was down so much? That's why it was so important to get that stipulation in there that we wouldn't be held hostage to that number if the numbers came back.
But that could change on any given year to go the other way, too, because when the deadline is cut off, if 50 more students get enrolled after that date, they don't get any more funding for that. So it goes both ways sometimes.
So there's a county in Maryland who I won't mention whose student population has actually cut in half over the last 10 years. They're still paying MOE based on the highest population. Once that MOE is established, you can't go below the total amount. It doesn't matter what the per student number is. Doesn't matter what the per student number is. You keep talking about, it doesn't matter. It's that dollar, total dollar amount that you gave them cannot go down.
So if we give them extra money, and we don't state that it goes to something particular like the buses, it becomes maintenance of effort.
You can't.
It's some things you can.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, earmark something's very difficult. But yeah, that's right. You have to be very careful because it keeps getting put on top.
So any increase we give above, any increase we give above the previous year, we are obligated to do next year.
It's almost there for life.
Yes.
It creates your base.
And I'm not trying to be a smart alec. Then why would we ever pay anything over the absolute minimum? Because that is going to tie us and the taxpayers into that in perpetuity, according to what?
Because, 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 because. Because what we're trying to do is have an excellent education for our children. And when the school board comes in and says, we need this to do that, in the past, boards have given them, that's why we do it.
But we can, we can give them the minimum, absolute bare minimum, and then say, oh, you need an extra million for this project? Okay, we'll give you the extra million, but that's a one-time funding, kind of like what we just did with the buses.
That's why with the funding formula, the caveat was put in there that once it hit, I think it was 5 million, inundiscretionary, it was to go to OPEB. So.
So they couldn't keep building.
Build their front house.
So Sharon, let me ask you a question. So if I'm at home, I'm looking at this, and I go, well, obviously, why wouldn't you just reduce it by 10%, right? Just seems so simple. But does that number reflect an interruption in services?
It potentially could.
So I don't want to mislead anybody that you would sit there and go, well, that's a no-brainer. Last year, we cut 3%. So if I'm doing the math, now I'm at 13%. Do you have 13% going back to last year to cut out of a budget? So when I see that number, is that even a realistic thing to put on the screen?
It's not realistic. 10% would be a huge impact.
It's a huge number.
It would be a huge impact. You know, for the past several years, we've asked the departments to either remain flat or decrease or operating where they could by 3%. Some departments can't.
Well, and I would say that if 13% was really in there, then the five of us aren't doing our job because what are we doing with having 13% that we don't really need to run this county with? So that's, so that's, that's why I say, you know, I appreciate that number up there. I just don't know how functional it is.
Correct.
And all the money that they're asking doesn't increase any teachers at all, correct?
No.
No.
What do you mean by increased? Yes, they asked for eight teachers and four advisors, I believe.
I knew of the counselors. I didn't know of the teachers.
Yeah, there were eight teachers in there. Yeah. So are you done?
Yeah, I can go to the next slide.
I thought you had more savings going.
No, there was only one slide for that one. Sorry.
So we have eight slides of expenditures and one slide of savings. There's no balance here, Sharon.
I know. I will try better.
You're doing the best you can.
This is just, you know, just the things to consider for FY '24 and beyond. So we still have the Kerwin Maryland Blueprint for Education. We still have the Police Accountability Board. We have the debt for the new County Services Plaza. And again, the market adjustment that isn't included in the schedules that were previously shared for county employees.
Sharon, when do you expect to get a little forecast on that Kerwin and what year that could land?
I think.
They pushed it.
Yeah.
It's available for the governor to sign yesterday.
Do we have any early indications of what impact that is on the budget?
I have not seen anything yet.
I don't think so. It's not going to be, it's not going to be less than what we're paying. So, and that's going to wipe out everything we've ever, I mean, whatever we thought maintenance of effort was, that's going to.
And to Commissioner Gadyway's point, the school board's not going to like this. But it does behoove us to be careful how much we give them over MOE this year because Kerwin's coming, and that's got to come. So I'm, I'm trying to help you out here. I get it. You know, if we give them five or six million and then create a new MOE, and then Kerwin comes in the next year or two.
So, sitting here now, 11 years, history repeats itself. The 800-pound gorilla in the room was the pension shift years ago when I arrived. And we disbanded the funding formula, which was successful. And it is successful when times are good. It's raining now, and it's not good. So the two at the top, we don't even have any purview or control.
And you know one's going to be a line item next year, Steve, for a fact. Even if Kerwin's not completely implemented, you know mandated July 1, the Responsibility Board. So that, that's got to be funded immediately.
And, and, and look, I'm not degrading those two points. It is what it is. This is what we do, the highest and best use of taxpayer funding. And it is a tough year. And it's going to be a tough year next year. So like I've conveyed to some of you, my fellow board members, I think it's going to be harder next year, two years from now.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's going to be.
Absolutely. We're not even talking about the Dominion piece either.
And I filed to do this again?
And you filed to do it again. And that's a good man. And I, I'll tell you publicly, anyone that has filed, I commend them. I really do. You're stepping in the arena.
Well, and with doing this, unfortunately, this will be my seventh budget. There's a lot more unknowns than we've ever seen. You know, you can go back and remember, I said it a million times, income tax, when the state around said it could have been a 30% reduction. Well, that means you're, that means you're letting people go. You don't have $30 million. It ain't there. I mean, you're talking, you're talking a shutdown of a lot of services. And then all of a sudden, it came back, you know, we've said it before, it wasn't real. Came back with an overage, which you can't count on. You know, we've seen Dominion do this. We know it's going to go here. But this is variables we've never seen, that this Kerwin, and that's a great analogy, Steve, to go back to the pension shift. And then when we lost highway user funds. You know, I mean, you put those two together, you got almost $10 million. Now, you do that over five years, and there's a little, little extra cushion there. So, but this is different because, and that's why I ask, do we know any inklings, state always, you know, it's election year. So state, federal government, throw away, throw around money now, but any election year next year. So, you know, might not see some of this funding that we've seen in the past. And that, that's a little unnerving. I don't like to spend anything I don't have.
Right. And the new retiree income tax adjustment.
Correct. Where's that coming from?
Right.
Right.
And how will that impact? So.
I, I had this heated discussion with somebody because they didn't remember inflation. You know, me being a kid in the 70s, you know, remembering inflation and odd and even days and everything. There is no free lunch.
No.
You can have anything you want, but you have to pay for it some way or another. And unfortunately, we only have 92,000 ways to pay for it. And that's the residents and then the businesses that are here as well. And that, and that is it. And it has to come from those folks. So, and I had a guy, he was wearing me out the other day about wanting this and wanting that. I said, you know, you got to pay for it. There's just, there is no, so, and it's, it's going to be a very, very challenging board the next four years because there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Correct. Right.
I can, just to sum it up and reiterate, obviously, we're obligated to pay an MOE minimum to the schools. If it's $1, if the law says we have to give them $1 more than what we did before, I would be absolutely 100% on board with that and that only. And then anything else that we need to give them, we give them in a one-time position because that would not bind us and tie us down two, three, four, five years, and in perpetuity moving forward. With the way I understand the law, and I, and I, I thought I understood it, but 15 minutes ago, I was, you guys educated me even more so, and I didn't realize that it is no matter what. It's, it doesn't matter if it's the dollar amount per student. It doesn't matter if the students got cut in half.
You have to show extreme hardship. You would really have to make a case to go below that.
You know, the population of the students getting cut in half. Quite a few years ago, I don't, I don't know how. I remember the chart the other day, five, eight, 10 years ago, we were at 17,000, way over 17,000 students in this county. And now we're barely over 15,000. So we're paying more, let even, not even talking about cost of limit increases and everything else. We're paying more now, if I understand that correctly, for 15,000 students than we were for 17,000 students before.
Probably accurate.
Yep.
Wow. So I, I just don't understand how we can do anything other than the absolute minimum. And then if other stuff has to be paid, flag it as some special project or special whatever. You know, put it into the other instructional category.
But we don't have to make that decision today. But, so when you, I didn't see a slide. So when you recalculate based on our discussions yesterday and what you've heard today, what is the hole? What's my $20 million hole?
So most of what, of the 20 million is included in the staff recommended budget, or a good portion of it. What we need to decide now is, of the new initiatives, that the new staffing initiatives and the new initiatives that the departments have requested, what would you like included in the staff, in the commissioner's budget? So looking at some of the, if we go back to the original slide.
So here's what was on the slide, and I might as well do this now. We had a little discussion yesterday about a hiring freeze. And what I would recommend to my fellow board members today is that we implement an immediate soft hiring freeze.
Define soft, please.
That means they have to go through a process. They can't just, if someone leaves today, they just can't automatically re-advertise to fill that position. They've got to go through a chain, through the administrator, through HR to say, yes, this position is vitally important. I have to have it. I only suggest that because, you know, hiring people and having them on the books now gives you less options to figure out how we balance '23. Not saying we wouldn't hire, still hire people. You know, we're still going to hire people, but it's just not automatic that just because somebody leaves for whatever reason, we're going to go ahead and fill that position. Because, you know.
How does that affect Parks and Recs with their problem?
They would, well, Parks and Recs, for those of you that don't know, already have 147 vacancies for seasonal positions, which is going to impact park services this summer. There's no way we can open up a park, a pool, operate a campground if we don't have employees. So that has really, it will freeze those positions, but we can't fill those anyway. They're not the hard ones, you know? And if the director came forward and said, look, I've got to have this, then that's, it's just to make directors justify how they spend their money. Because, you know, you say 10% isn't realistic. 10% might be realistic. I mean, it's.
If we normally have a 3% attrition rate, 3% or 4% attrition rate, that could get us, if I'm understanding what you're saying, if we don't backfill that 4% of retirees or people that leave.
Well, my concern, yeah, my concern is, and obviously, you're addressing that as well, is backfill of emergency services. I mean, those, right, those, so I don't want anybody at home to think, ambulance, we don't have an ambulance driver.
Right.
But I know exactly what you're saying. If somebody retires or leaves from, it, it may have to wait. It may not.
Figure this out, but once they're on board, then we've got them, is my only point.
Right.
Because this ain't easy.
And, and I'm, so if we had to balance today, is slide four accurate, just with what you have? Be a minus 1/4. That's without anything new, right?
So.
No, there's still some new.
There's still some new in there.
Correct.
Right.
These are new staffing requests, new initiatives.
That are already figured in.
No. These are, this $4 million under the commissioner's budget, under the second column, the $4,142,000. Those are new requests. They're not included in the staff recommended budget, nor the $5 million for the Board of Education to bring them up to the $9 million that they have requested. Over $9 million requested. So again.
That's another discussion for another day.
So, Mr. President, the way I, if I understand a couple of the earlier slides, we'd be looking at, we've already got requests for 22 FTEs for next fiscal year. Would that soft hiring freeze immediately negate those 22? And this, and directors would have to come back and re-sell, resell us on those positions, for lack of a better term?
Do the administrator and the HR.
Commissioner Mark Willis, County Administrator, the way that that process works, and the county's been through that process for years at a time in the past. It starts with the director of each department. They submit a request to fill a position through the Office of Personnel. It goes through the Office of Finance and Budget, and then it ends up on the county administrator's desk for a final decision. And operational requirements, I'll go into that. Safety requirements go into that. And we push the envelope out as far as we can, for as long as we can, and try to save that money to the end of the year. Eventually, we don't, we're not looking to lose the FTE necessarily, that full-time equivalent position. But we are looking to save money, and we are looking to be efficient. So there are, there have been times when positions have been eliminated. And that's something that the Director of Human Resources has been very focused on, along with those positions that are the higher-paid positions at the retirement level. uh, along with those positions that are the higher-paid positions at the retirement level. So, when a position is retiring, we're definitely taking a strong look at how to reorganize that particular position.
And I just, and I appreciate the clarification on that. As President Hans mentioned earlier, when we're talking about the Sheriff's Department pay parity, I, he and I have had multiple conversations in reference to, I, I just can't, I can't do for one group without doing for all county. And I've seen what some of the entry-level positions are in this county as far as what the, the pay is, and it's, it's somewhat disheartening at times to see how other private industry can literally offer double sometimes what our entry-level pay is. And I want everybody to understand that we are working hard to bring the steps in, to make sure that we try and get the people more pay that are here, so they understand how much we value them as the current employees. And if it takes a little bit of time to backfill some of these other positions and put these other people on and bring them on new, and that's where we need to go, in my opinion.
Commissioners, if I may add more, so, it, it's not a simple, it's not as simple as holding a position back and then not filling it. I, I wanna be very honest, and I wanna defend my directors out there. They have to then pay overtime. They're gonna fill some of these positions, one way or the other. So, we may not fill that position with an actual, uh, new hired staff member. We may be backfilling that position by taking two or three other folks and giving them additional overtime as required to, to support the citizens of the county. When we can avoid it, we avoid it, but oftentimes, and there are some savings in that. But, uh, I, I don't wanna fool anybody by thinking that there's not a cost to, to not hiring back a position.
But, but that's the part of the process, the assessment.
That, that is part of the process.
If I don't fill this position, this is the.
That's right.
You know, consequence.
And, and we track that on a regular basis, we have a, a vacancy report that we look at, we know when we fill it, we know what the dollar amount is, because, uh, you know, Director, uh, Melanie Woodson just sits around doing nothing and waiting for all this additional, uh, statistics to fill out, but, uh, we're, we're there, we know what's going on, it's just very tough to say straight up that we're gonna save a bunch of money when we are gonna save some, but it's gonna not be as much as you might think.
Well, we're kinda already in a hiring freeze, nobody wants to work. It's hard to find people to fill the positions, so.
And that's true, and that goes back to what the commissioners are working on right now, as far as, uh, you know, I don't necessarily like the term of pay parity, but, because it's really when you look at your surrounding areas, you know, what are folks paying? Uh, right now, if you go out here and you wanna hire for a construction company, you might make twenty-five, thirty-five dollars an hour. For the county, you might start at eighteen or nineteen dollars an hour. We're, we're never gonna keep folks like that, we're never gonna hire, uh, more quality folks that way, and that's what you're trying to address right now with what you discussed today, along with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying to get ourselves back to where, uh, the rest of the counties are pulling themselves up to.
I think we have to be mindful that people pay taxes in this county, and they expect a certain amount of services. And when we start not being able to provide those services, it becomes an issue. So, um, you know, we need to make sure that we maintain the quality of services, and if we're not filling in, in positions that are needed, then we're not fulfilling that. So, we have to be very mindful of that.
As long as you can find the money to pay for them.
Well, I thi, I think like with Parks and Recs, it's, it's not, well, I think it's just, just trying to get the bodies, they've had a job fair. Um, so, please, please, you know, hoping that this summer, um, people come out, you know, I think last year too with COVID, a lot of people, you know, they didn't wanna be up close, and Parks and Recs brings a lot of people in from a lot of different places, so I do have a major concern that, um, are we gonna fine staffing? So, it's, um, it's not for lack of looking or, or wanting the folks, it's just, um, trying to get the people to apply. So, um, hopefully, hopefully they, they come out.
So, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Are you seeking, uh, consensus on implementing a, a soft hiring?
I'm just throwing stuff out there, trying to get a path to a balanced budget, 'cause I, I'm not voting for an unbalanced budget, I don't know about anybody else sitting behind those chairs, and, uh, this budget right now is, you've been through it before, so you know where we are.
Yeah, fix it, Steve, will you?
Yeah.
Well, and I mean, you know, and I'm, I'm listening to the discussion, in the past, there has been some rather, you know, terms thrown around. I'm not in favor of a furlough.
No, me either.
Um, not at all, that, that's a, you, when you throw that out, that's a, a, a red meat issue. And I'm not okay with that, we're not there.
No.
Um, I think a soft hiring freeze, I could absolutely, moving forward. Uh, we've got our county administrator to guide direction toward, for the directors, and, and they will come to him with their needs, and, uh, and with the understanding that it's, the overtime, I've got that. But I think at this point, I, uh, I believe a soft hiring freeze should go into effect.
That'll take a motion, that's not a consensus issue.
I'll make the motion that we implement a soft hiring freeze for FY twenty-three.
Effective. Second.
Um.
Effective.
Effective?
Effective today.
Um, Director Woodson. Just like so, planning and zoning, uh, there are people in process, correct?
Melanie Woodson, Human Resources Director, yes, sir, we have several positions in process right now.
So, I'm just throwing this out for the board, and while the motion is still raw, um, there's different levels in the process, correct?
Correct.
What do you consider, what would you consider? I keep going to planning and zoning, out of the ground, wh, wh, what do you consider out of the ground in the hiring process, so?
An acceptance letter, probably.
Just an advertisement is not out of the ground for me.
You mean who's grandfathered in?
Yeah, who's grandfathered in.
Well, I think anybody's got an acceptance letter is, you know, but.
So, in the past, when we conducted a soft hiring freeze, it was at the point of requisition to fill. So, when a department would submit a requisition based off of a vacancy, at that point, the soft hiring freeze process would begin. So, if a requisition has already been approved, or if a position has already been advertised, or if we are currently negotiating with an employee, that would not be part of the soft hiring freeze, as was implemented in years past.
Okay, that's just what I, that's all I'm looking for.
Okay.
Commissioners, are you also looking for, if there are already folks already in the system, it's already advertised, shall we let them go forward, or shall?
That's my point here.
Okay.
Because we know, we all know that they've probably done interviews, 'cause we're always hiring. They've done interviews, they've done different things, so my question to you all is, you know, you can't just say today, we're not hiring anybody, because some people may even have a letter that they haven't responded to yet. So, we need to make sure that we do this fairly, I don't want, you know, somebody to.
We don't want somebody to have left a job to come to this one, and now since they don't have a job, so.
Right.
So, yeah, I, I don't think it's that restrictive, I think it's gonna be a lot of discretion in there, but I think you understand the theme of where we're going, I think is what we should say.
What it.
I can amend my.
Would it, would it be safe to assume that if a position is, had the requisition approved as of, let's say, a week ago, but there's never been any advertisement, it hasn't actually followed through, it hasn't, they haven't o, made the opening or advertised, would that be something that could be pulled back to just have reviewed to make sure that it's still critical, mission critical? And I have no idea if there is any in that ballpark, but.
Commissioners, I believe that what we can do is look at, you know, if we've advertised and that position, and that particular advertisement has closed, and we've identified who the applicants are, that we maybe make the cutoff there. So, there are plenty of them out there where it, it hasn't been advertised yet, the department heads may have, may have already put in the requisition, but nothing's happened to it out to the public, so I would say that if there's anything that hasn't gone out to the public, then we start with, with them as the soft hiring freeze, anything that's already been advertised and the public's been looking at it, then, uh, we let those go forward, and I think we can identify what that is, I mean, the numbers that have already gone out for advertisement, I don't think it's a huge number, but, uh, so that, to sum that up, if it, if it's requisition's in, but it hasn't been advertised, then we pull that back, we do a soft hiring freeze review. If it's been advertised, we allow it to go forward.
So, I'm gonna take, uh, a, uh, shall we say, uh, an initiative to amend my motion to exclude number one, advertised positions, and number two, if the requisition has not been approved.
Yes, sir.
Second. So, I have a motion in the second that we institute a soft hiring freeze, but we exempt those positions that have been advertised. What would be the other one?
And if the requisition has not been approved.
Gotcha. Discussion on that motion.
Yeah, so I'm just a little bit concerned that we're acting this fast on it and not thinking it through a little bit more, we haven't had any discussions on it. Um, I'm, I'm really concerned about Parks and Recs right now, because we did, we've already discussed that situation that we're in. So, I just think, I think we should've maybe had a discussion about this and looked at other options and, and, uh, figured out something, instead of just making this decision right now.
If I understood.
Just my twenty percent.
Well, this doesn't affect Parks and Recs.
It was my understanding and impression that this, all of this is totally negated when a director comes to county admin and says, hey, we need to have a hundred and thirty-seven people hired in order to open the parks. That hundred and thirty-seven or a hundred and thirty-nine, if we can find those people and they fall under the budget, those people, is my understanding, would be hired if the county admin approved
Correct.
those hundred and thirty. It's adding a, it's adding, it, the soft, the key word's soft, I understood it to be, it has to go through their office.
Right, but do you now have to come to us to get our approval to, to hire somebody?
No, sir, it rests with me as the final decision.
Okay.
So, just blame them. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, and just for the public, you know, we don't have a budget issue now. The, the only intent of this is to not have bodies in place come July one, that, and then we're not stuck with a furlough trying to fix. So, that's the only intent here, and it's, it's soft. I've been through them with the state, and they're either hard or soft, and some of them are really soft, so. But it's just to make us account for our personnel, and make sure that we really truly need those positions. Because they're not gonna like the other cut, which is the other decision we have to make, so if you wanna go back to that slide, we gotta pick a cut.
Right, so, and I did just wanna go quickly here, um, so, the public hearing for the commissioner's budgets on May seventeenth, we need to have the budget finalized and published by May third. So, that's a month, which sounds like a lot of time, but it's really not. So, the closer we can get to decisions on how to move forward, um, the better today. So, let me go back to, um, this slide. Um, so, from the, from the first slide, we have about three point nine million dollars from revenue adjustments and expenditure adjustments from the staff recommended budget. So, that's kind of our starting point to use. Um, and these are other possible saving, or other ideas that we could use to fund the staff initiatives, the technology services initiatives, or initiatives that we can go back and look at, um, or any other initiatives that you would like included in the commissioner's budget that has not been listed here.
If we reduce the BOE to the, excuse me. If we reduce the Board of Ed to the minimum, that would save us the three point eight, correct?
Correct.
It's my understanding that they, that they're getting significantly more from federal and state than what they were originally anticipating. I believe they were gonna be getting five to six, and it looks like they're gonna be getting eleven from federal and state, so in theory, that would help balance that out. And then if there is, and that wouldn't tie us into anything in the future, and if we decide later on to give them something additional, that would still be possible. And the health premium balance, that's when we did the last two back steps, is that where, is that the same pot of money that that other came from?
Correct, so currently in the staff recommended budget, the three back steps or longevity steps are being paid for with this, so this is above and beyond that. Um, so, yes, so this is additional funds that we could use.
Well, Mr. President, I found six point eight.
So, my, my only, um, my only caution would be, I think that, uh, my recommendation would be that we bring the superintendent back in again and have a discussion about how much we're gonna give them and where that money's gonna go. Instead of blanketly telling them we're gonna cut them four or five million dollars. I think they deserve that much. And, and we, we need to ask them at that time, wh, what are they doing with the eleven mi, new money? New eleven million they're getting from the state, or wherever that's coming from. Because when you add the two together, they ask of us, and that, that's twenty-two million dollars, what in the world?
Well, and I know the federal has gone down significantly in the original budget, in the superintendent's budget that they sent.
And that's a number we need to find out, 'cause we don't know, right, we don't know if it offsets, if it leaves them one to the good, five to the good, we don't know. So, that, that's a valid point, let's get that information.
I could have them come back in.
As far as the.
As well.
As far as the percentage up there, that's gonna be county administrator when he gets with you guys, and to kick those tires again, very similar to last year, when you went back to the three percent. What's realistic, what's not?
Okay. If we can just go back real quick here, um, so I can, so again, these are new staffing requests. Um, as you note on here, that there's a grant administrator and then a mitigation grant administrator with two asterisks. Um, if you note at the bottom, these are positions that are intended to cover themselves through grant awards that we receive. Um, the state's attorney's office had asked for two positions, and so this is the lowest of the position. And then, uh, well, breezy point is a pretty much zero impact, but for budget purposes, we have to display it this way. Um, so, I, I wanted to see how, if you would like to include any of these positions in the commissioner's budget moving forward.
So, a grants, a grant person's gonna pay for themselves?
Correct.
Pretty much.
Correct.
And we have to have the help in the state's attorney's office with the new police accountability board coming towards us, so.
Commissioners, also as well, for that particular position, that, uh, that attorney is, is primarily, and certainly we have the, uh,
State's Attorney.
State's Attorney here, but, uh, domestic violence is something that, you know, across the country, we're pushing that, so that's one that's gonna focus on domestic violence predominantly, but it will help where the state's attorney sees that.
Mr. State's Attorney, would you like to add anything?
Well.
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes, uh, State's Attorney Bob Harvey, thank you, sir. Well, I'm here to fight for that position. My ask is a hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars out of all of these millions we've been talking about. As the temptations told us of many years ago, I ain't too proud to beg either. I'm here to beg. We need this position, this is the bare minimum, we have a domestic violence problem throughout the country and in this county. We had over three hundred cases in twenty-twenty-one, and they're being handled by basically one attorney full-time and a part-time attorney in district court. Because of the sensitivity and complexity of these cases, it behooves us to have prosecutors dedicated to these cases. I can't just throw, first of all, a lot of prosecutors don't wanna do these cases, these cases are very, very difficult, very emotional. It behooves us to have an attorney who wants to do these cases, has a passion for these cases, and that's what this position is intended to fulfill. The other thing that, that's happened, uh, when you, when you grant the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Office new deputies, that increases our workload. Last year, I believe they got nine or ten new deputies, we got one attorney. COVID, COVID has saved us, the workload in other areas has gone down, but COVID is not gonna save us any longer. So, I'm asking you to consider adding this, this one position, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. State's Attorney. Okay, gentlemen, questions, discussion?
Well, to, to that, to that point, the one thing you don't want to fall through the crack is, you don't want domestic. Well, to, to that, to that point, the one thing you don't want to fall through the crack is you don't want, domestic abuse is, is so sensitive, it's, people are embarrassed. And if they feel that it isn't gonna matter anyway, then it just continues. So that's, that would be a fear of mine that, you know, I don't want to do anything that would not increase our chances to try to, to try to, to, to help that, you know, but.
Make a motion.
I, I make a motion to, to keep that in there.
Which position?
I'm sorry, the assistant state's attorney, that's, that's the one, right, State's Attorney? For, that's for domestic?
But back to, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So that's the one we're discussing right there, yeah, I would make a motion to keep that in the budget.
Second.
So, I'm, I'm in favor.
I have a motion in a second on the floor, is there a discussion?
Yes, but I, I'm in favor of moving it forward. I think what Commissioner McConkey was alluding to is globally, all of these positions, right?
Because the other two will pay for themselves.
So, I mean, we can vote individually, I have no problem, but.
Yeah, that's true, I don't have a problem ending that in the motion because that's true, the other two really.
Yeah.
So we would, we would put in the mitigation grant administrator and then the grants administrator, as long as the assistant state's attorneys. I'll make a motion to accept those three positions.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on the floor that we adopt the county administrator, grants administrator, state's attorney, assistant state's attorney, one, emergency management mitigation grant administrator. Is there any discussion on that motion?
And, and not to leave anything out, because the traffic control's taking care of itself, correct? That doesn't need to be included in there, right? That's just a footnote in there, right?
Well, we like the process zero.
That's just a placeholder, right, but that's, that's taken care of itself, correct?
Well, normally FTEs have to be approved, that's why they're on.
Okay, then I'm sorry, I'm sorry, then, then let me amend it to put basically that whole slide.
Robert Rules Training 101.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I just, I just assumed that that was just a placeholder.
Commissioners, the, the reason for that is we do have to establish the FTEs, however, the monies that have been spent to date are taken out of the budget, a transfer will happen within the budget to cover the cost of that, it's no increase to this year 23.
Okay, so I'm sorry to.
So does the second order agree to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second on the floor that we adopt all four new positions.
There we go.
Is there a discussion on that motion?
There's seven.
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, yeah, well, sorry, yeah, sorry.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the epitome of the definition of a soft hiring freeze, ma'am.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It is.
Five minutes ago and we were explaining that this is how, this is how it works.
When you look at one, three, and four, they take care of themselves and really the only new money.
They're next year's budget, so.
Right, would be, would be the assistant state's attorney.
Right. That's how it works.
I just have to make sure I'm tracking.
You're tracking, you're right on track today.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. What else? Director Strand?
So, next slide is new initiatives that have been brought to us by technology services. Originally, the request was for 523,000, it's been reduced by 196,000. Some of the reductions were due to wifi and hotspots that we could now pay with ARPA. And again, we've worked with department, with technology services to reduce these items also.
So, and I didn't earlier, but I should've, just remember, everything we add, we have to cut. That's how this works.
Commissioners, I will add that we looked at this, we spoke with the, so if you see on here, although it's, it's technology, but it goes back to very specific departments, I was made fun of because the one there, RTA, I actually brought that onboard about 22 years ago. So it's, it's antiquated, it needs to be upgraded. But everything on here is directly related to providing services to the citizens or providing efficiency validation to the, at the state level. Whether it's floodplain management, the environmental aspects that we're looking at now, or our ability to use, for example, Blue Beam or update to Digiplan. That's a way for our, our planners and our engineers to, to look at plans concurrently to try to speed the process up through the pipeline when we're doing work for a, a particular homeowner or a particular business, it doesn't matter.
To consultant, can somebody go into that a little bit?
A planning zoning consultant for information functionality in Zendesk?
Yes, so I'm Amy Lawson, I'm the director of technology services. So the consulting, would you like to speak about the consulting for land management or?
It's basically the functionality, is there somebody on staff that can do that or we need to outsource that?
We need to outsource that because it's, it's an integration between Infor and Zendesk and we don't have developers on staff. So it's, it's to hire some developers.
That's my question.
And we already discussed you have to have a load balancer.
We do need a load balancer, actually we have everything on that list, that's one of the most important things, so make sure my servers
Yeah, right.
That it can go between the different servers.
Can't have a drive lopsided.
There is nothing up there that says other.
No, there's no other up there.
We don't do other, do we? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, and I wasn't referring that we shouldn't do these, I was just saying.
Make a motion that we accept new initiatives.
As presented.
As presented.
Thank you, sir.
Have a motion in a second that we adopt those new item initiatives as presented. Any discussion on that motion?
Only, only want to point out, this is not a recurring operational expense.
Correct. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Director?
Now this slide.
Just, if the record could note, the Commissioner Hart is not gonna participate in the discussion on the detention center market adjustment.
Do I need to leave the room?
If there's gonna be a specific discussion about that line, yes.
So, so this is the last slide that we're gonna be looking at for right now. These are the other department requests outside of technology services. So again, there's the market adjustment for the sheriff's office and detention center. Now, this, this slide shows it at, at a full gear instead of at a half year.
So you've got to adjust that back.
So we have to adjust that back.
And based on our earlier discussion, the Board of Ed is gonna come off of there until we.
Correct.
Would that be three, would that be the 3,810,905?
So right now, it would be the 5,362,744 that we would reduce staff requests by.
Understood, but I was under the impression that the MOE, the actual bare minimum MOE was 3,810,905.
Correct, and we have not been directed whether to move that or reduce that, so that would be on top of this 5 million.
Right, so we're gonna take that out until we meet with the Board of Ed and make a final decision.
That's right, I just wanted to make sure that this slide didn't get passed.
Nope, nope.
Thank you.
I thought I pointed that out, but.
You probably did, I wasn't listening.
Pay attention. You, you gotta readjust the market adjustments. You've gotta remove the Board of Education for today's purposes. So gentlemen, you have what's left on the list between, you know, emergency management down to public library. And there, what about market adjustment for our employees?
So a market adjustment for our employees based on the Mako survey is 17%. We are getting 4% of a COLA in July 1 of this year, but we don't know exactly right now what the other counties are getting, so we might just still be even at 17%. For phasing that in over a one-year period, it's 10.8 million dollars. A three-year period is about 3.6, and then a five-year period would be 2.1 approximately.
So, can we do this, since that's not up there and Commissioner Hart can't be here? Gentlemen, let's just take care of these items that are up here and then we'll talk about that so Commissioner Hart can participate, how's that?
Are you? Yes, that's fine. I'll go get it.
We, we gotta, we've.
From the 2,500 down to about the 27,500, it's only about 88, around 88,000 dollars if you skip the two market adjustment lines and you skip the Board of Ed line.
I was gonna say, if we approve, are you asking for an approval to move forward on emergency management, marine museum, public library?
Yes.
Yes.
I move on, I'll make that motion.
So I get.
I have a motion in a second that we adopt everything below the detention center and above Board of Education on chart eight.
And the rest will come back?
Yes. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, who seconded the motion?
I did.
Okay. I just collapsed. I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Hart, he can hear us.
So, for the sheriff's office and the detention center pay parity or market adjustment, do you want us to bring that back in another work session along with the employee?
Right.
Okay.
So we have all the numbers, because you just mentioned a phase in and so
Right, yep.
that's news.
That was new yesterday, yes, so we didn't have time to update this for the public.
So we need a slide based on the conversation we had yesterday and covering all the other county employees.
Correct, okay, we will bring that back to you.
Okay.
Okay.
What date, will that be on the 26th, or what, what was the date again?
We haven't picked a date yet, but.
You have a May 3 deadline, right? You have a May 3 deadline.
It's gotta be the 26th.
Yeah.
Because we have to have two weeks, and we don't need to advertise for two weeks.
It'd be nice to get it on, if possible, next week, so we, we have time to roll it.
We don't need it.
Do we meet next week, when's Easter?
Yeah, it's the following week that we're off.
Okay.
This, the 19th. So if we could put this, if it's okay with the county administrator, if we could get this on for next week, that way staff will have time to roll it into the budget.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all?
That's all.
Until next week.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you both very much.
None to it.
Do you do it? Nothing to it, do you do it?
That's right.
Next day, morning, agenda is a work session, department planning zoning, consolidated transportation, transportation program priority letter.
Yeah, I think we've already seen this movie a few times, haven't we?
Yeah, I think we have. They'll be quick.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Mary Beth Hope, Director of Planning and Zoning, we're here for our yearly Consolidated Transportation Program Priority Letter and to know what priorities.
And I know they have new money for the bridge, I know.
You wanna have, so Tamara's with me today, she's gonna introduce herself and walk you through the memo.
Good morning, Tamara Blake Wallace, Principal Planner, Planning and Zoning. As you know, every year, the Board of County Commissioners sends two letters to the Secretary of Maryland Department of Transportation outlining our transportation priorities and then the other is the regional letter to Tri-County Council. Each year, we go through this cycle of the counties picking a priority and Tri-County basically sends a letter of support for those priorities. In the fall, the MDOT staff comes down and they tell us what we have been funded for or what we have not been funded for. The discussion this year, last year, Calvert County received funding for the Safe Routes to School Project to provide, for safer alternatives for bicyclists and pedestrians along Maryland 261 from Beach Elementary School to the Chesapeake Village neighborhood and from Beach Elementary along Old Bayside Road. Due to budgetary restraints, many of our top priority projects were unfunded. Our top priority this year is the Thomas Johnson Bridge, once again. As you are aware, on March 11th of this year, Senators Carden and Senator Van Hollen announced an 11 million in direct investments for Anna Rundle and the Southern Maryland Community Projects. And that comes from the FY22 federal omnibus funding. St. Mary's and Calvert received 1 million of these funds for design improvements for the Thomas Johnson Bridge and the corridor between Maryland 4 and 235. Although we are pleased that we received this funding from the FY22 omnibus funding, more funding is needed in order for this project to be completed, as we all know. In previous years, State Highway had budgeted 10 million for the design of the bridge and 5 million for the design for the road improvements between Maryland 4 and 235.
And to get some perspective, wasn't that original cost about eight years ago, wasn't it like around 850 million dollars for that bridge?
Yes, it was.
Can you imagine what the cost is today? I mean, with what building materials are, it's, you know, I'd rather the state of Maryland just take that money and actually put it on something that would be realistic, you know, maybe 231 or something, I, I don't understand how they, how they go, whoa, there's a million dollars, so. I mean, it's just.
Because that, that won't even do a design.
No.
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 I mean, what would it do?
Nothing, yeah, I mean, get us some sidewalks, take the million dollars and get us some sidewalks or, you know, something, something that the actual citizen could use, but, sorry.
So, we are asking MDOT this year to assist with the funds for the design phase and show future funding for the future phases of the bridge. So today, we are here to discuss the priority list and if approved, for you all to direct staff to finalize the priority list and prepare a letter to Tri-County Council and a cover letter to Maryland Department of Transportation.
I don't know, it really changes on this.
No, I think it's the same as always, you, you have to put it in there. It would really be nice if one of them would ever commit to a date, like, you know, we use CIP, you know, for our projects and you remember I asked him when he was here before, I'm like, it's, it's not even in here. It was great that, it was the first time I remember actually listing out the projects the way they did and I'm looking underneath the bridges and stuff and it's not even in there. So if it's not even in there, I mean, you know, and they always say that, they always say the things they have to say, yeah, we know you need it or what have you, but it's not even in their book. It would be nice if they would actually tell us when realistically they think that project. Could be 30 years from now, but it'd be like, it'd be, it'd be curious to hear what their number is.
Yeah, it's, it's not even on their priority, the state's priority, so it's never gonna happen.
We've had those discussions with them several times in person and through correspondence.
So the million dollars, is that for Calvert County, is that for Calvert and St. Mary's, or how is that?
The announcement that came out said St. Mary's, but it basically covers St. Mary's and Calvert because the bridge is a joint project there, so. And then the front four to.
We need them to redirect that money into a transportation study in Calvert County.
Yeah, they're gonna go.
A real one.
We can inquire whether that can be done.
Because you can't do nothing for a million dollars, that bridge.
No.
That, that's a great question.
Can we get smart lights?
Yeah, get the, get the traffic lights so we can sequence them and, I mean, there are things we could use that money for, but for the bridge, that's nothing.
And that, and that study, even if it, even if it would do it, and we know it wouldn't, would be obsolete in three to five years anyway. So it's, it's really just a big waste of taxpayers' money, so.
For the bridge.
For the bridge, yeah.
So anyway, we need a motion to adopt this priority.
Commissioners, if I may.
Yeah.
So we have a draft recommended letter for you and, and there are the, the main priorities, one, two, and three, the way that we're required to lay this out. So this document is much bigger than just this letter. There's a lot of work that goes into this, to the safety, to the transportation, et cetera, but specifically, the, the letter itself has Thomas Johnson Bridge as number one. It has number two as the 231 corridor improvements. Specifically, we want maintenance, we want upgrades to 231 in Calvert County. But when we refer to the corridor, it's always tied to the Tri-County area. I, I would like to, I'm asking the Commissioners to consider switching priority two and priority three because priority three is the final phase through Prince Frederick to basically auto-drive. It, it makes no sense to me, and I know monies are always tight, but it makes, makes no sense to me that we'll do two-thirds of a project to just bottleneck at the, the light at Traskers, for example, before we even get to the hospital. In phase three, if we make that phase two, also in that is the light technology, the, the switching light technology that Commissioner Gadway's talking about. Mary Beth has talked about that as far back as the, with the folks in New Orleans trying to get us as a pilot study for that and the state has not moved on that for us, but, but it's in there, so that would also move that up to number two. The reason it makes sense is the number two, which is the 231 corridor, if you move it to three, it's the number one priority when it falls under safety. It's already listed as the number one priority for safety. So, so we move it to number three in the priorities overall, but it remains the number one priority under safety. So, I think it gives us a better chance of getting, I don't know what we're getting for Thomas Johnson Bridge. I, I would not want to put money at the 231 corridor, but I would want to put money at the, the making progress completely through Prince Frederick.
What's the estimated cost for that last phase?
At this rate, because this is about 25 years old, they would have to do another cost estimate. This just puts the priority out, and it allows, if they accept it, they would have to give us money, maybe it's a million dollars, from the bridge, that they can give us to finish the corridor study through Prince Frederick.
A million dollars, you're not going to do it. So, gentlemen, you've heard the Administrator's recommendation. Action.
Yes, sir. Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to have staff direction to finalize the priorities list and prepare a letter to Tri-County Council and a cover letter to Maryland Department of Transportation, transmitting the board's priorities.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. I'm not going to reread that. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none.
Is that as recommended by the Administrator with the amendments as recommended?
Yes. Yes, as recommended by the county Administrator, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you. The floor has been opened for public comment. Persons in the meeting room will proceed first, and then callers. For callers, if you wish to speak, please press star nine or raise your virtual hand. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number. Speakers are asked to identify themselves and whether speaking as an individual or as the designated representative of a group before beginning your comments. Is anybody in the room? Please, go to the mic.
Good after, good afternoon, Commissioners. I've been here all day. My name's Joe Cormier, and I'll be speaking on behalf myself. So many things to talk about, and where to begin, I don't know. Budget, 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 right? Keep doing the good work on the budget. Something that I'm passionate about is lunch and breakfast for kids, because a hungry kid is a kid who isn't going to eat. And there are rumblings in the federal and state government that that is going away, and it is going to be very unfortunate. There's no free lunch in the world. But kids should be able to eat without having $2 in their pocket, and it takes so much time from the staff to count that money, get that money, find the kid's number, track down parents, hold up diplomas. It makes no sense to me, from a dollars and cents point, to make kids pay for lunch if it's going to cost us more money in the backend on the administration's side. And we've got so many things coming down the pipeline, the blueprint, the Police Accountability Board, all these things. Taxes might have to go up. I'll say it, I'll be the bad guy. Taxes might have to go up. We need services. We have to pay for those services. So, please don't listen to just the loudest voices in the room. Listen to the calm, cool, collected heads as well. We gotta be a system that works, and, you know, when the price of avocados go up, Mexico doesn't eat that cost, and, you know, keep dealing with guacamole, we have to pay more. So, raising TDRs for new housing is not going to make housing any cheaper for people that we need to come work at those $15 an hour jobs at the beach during the summer. They have nowhere to live. They're not going to commute four hours to do that. So, we need affordable housing in the county. Our kids need to eat, and I appreciate all the things you have to do on that side of the desk. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
I'm surprised I've actually learned how to do that. And I'm just here to talk to you, Commissioner Hart. I'm just going to talk, okay? I don't have any, I'm not going to be yelling or screaming or having you wanting to throw me out of the room. I'm Bob Estes. I'm representing Friends of Hunting Creek today. And I thought you might be interested to hear that this past Saturday, an army of volunteers went out and took roughly 60 site samples. And again, these are all volunteers in four of our critical watersheds. These, these samples will help inform us about the health of the watersheds, and if there's issues, help us to focus whatever resources need to be focused there. Last year's report, perhaps some of you read it, some of you may not have. I did, but anyway, because I wrote it. I think we're doing pretty good, but we want to keep doing good. So, the watersheds were Hunting Creek, Parker's Creek, St. Leonard's Creek, and Mill Creek down south. Not the one that's just over there, wherever it's over there is here. And you might be interested to know that some of the volunteers actually paid for the testing themselves out of their own pockets. So, they are passionate about that. The detailed report's probably sometime this summer. And Friends of Hunting Creek have, we've acquired some new instrumentation or got some loans that we can do even higher order science multiple times, maybe each quarter, for instance. And that's all good. We're all, we're all growing up. Oh, and by the way, we do have a community paddle coming up in May for Friends of Hunting Creek. I'll let you know how that's going at a later date, once we've settled on it. Actually, I'm supposed to be organizing that. Okay. Well, something a little more serious. You may recall me talking about the erosion problems over there at Calvert Hills from their stockpile and, and other, other things. The, the sediment mostly came from that dirt pile, but a lot of it came from, basically, you cut down forests, you put in clay. Guess what happens? Typical. But the problem was further amplified by what I consider a fairly poor design that basically funneled the water down to a single exit point. That's not me. I don't know. And it doesn't allow the water to actually soak into the ground like it did prior to that. So, the result, you have a large amount of water funneled into a single spot. Guess what happens? Nothing good. You're, you're going to get erosion from that. And then you dump the water downstream of the sediment fence, and you produce additional erosion in that corridor leading down to the other parts of the watershed. So, about a year ago, I started engaging MDE, trying to get them to come down there, filed numerous complaints. Hey, guess what? They dragged the developer in, the contractor in. They came up with a plan. If you go over there now, you'll see some new stuff. It's better. I'm not sure it's robust enough to solve the problem if you get a big storm. I am over there whenever it rains. Didn't rain enough. I was kind of disappointed today to, to see how it's working. But I'm not convinced that, like, they're robust, but also the MDE failed to force the responsible parties to fix a, a ravine that's growing outside of the silt fence, growing towards the development. And I measure these things with tape measures and whatever else in photographic evidence. That grew eight feet last year, one year. Okay, and that's eight foot of sediment going downhill, and it's not a, that's not a good scene. I'm, I'm fighting with that. I've given them topographic maps. I've given them evidence of pictorial evidence and all that sort of thing. I think they're trying to fight it. I still have a good relationship with them, so hopefully they can convince their opers to, to do something about that. But, oh, and by the way, their position is that it's now the county's responsibility to fix that, and I'm fighting them on that too. Because I don't want to pay for it. You don't want to pay for it, but we also don't want the blutens. So, we think that the developer should be and contractor should be. So, what, part of the reason I'm telling you about this is it's sort of good news, but this is a poster child for what we've been trying to explain to you all and to the, the rest of the county. This is a poster child for what happens in the real world. In the real world, developer comes up with a plan, sort of executes it, doesn't implement it properly, doesn't maintain it, doesn't inspect it. MDE doesn't have enough people, and you end up with a mess. So, consider that when you're considering expansions into these fragile areas, because that's what's going to happen. It'll happen again. And as always, I've got pictures, graphics, and the, and the offer for a tour is always available. Just give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Myra Gallons. I represent Calvert Citizens United. And a couple of weeks ago, I was at the Planning Commission meeting when they talked about taking the sewer 25 miles from Prince Frederick and taking it down to Solomon's. I then talked to Dr. Miller about it, and he hadn't even heard of this. And usually, they get something from MDE that lets them know that they're going to need to make a report about this, not, is it a good idea or a bad idea? But here's the upside and the downside. Mr. Willis, our county administrator, got up and said, "MDE has been involved in this from the very beginning, and they're the biggest supporters of this project." So, when you have this reviewing and approving level at the state level, trying to decide this for you, it's kind of hard to back away, especially when they hold the purse that pays for a very large chunk of this. Keep in mind, Calvert citizens won't have the burden of paying for this. It's going to be the people who use the sewer who happen to be Calvert citizens. Now, I talked to Mr. Sephory. I got two names from our county. Mr. Sephory at MDE, and I talked to Mr. Fretwell. Mr. Sephory tells me he doesn't even know about this. He's not even heard of it. He didn't get a package. He didn't get anything. But he tells me, when I talk with him, he said, "We don't give $40 million to anybody, and that's what you're asking for in your budget, is $38,000 and change." So, he told me, he said, I said, "Have you talked to the delegate commissioner? The commissioner who would probably fine tune this thing?" He said, "I don't even know who your commissioners are. All we had was a telephone discussion." I said, "Thank you very kindly," and I hung up. I then called Mr. Fretwell. We missed each other's call, and he emails me. Mr. Fretwell tells me that this is a pie in the sky thing, that we did not, your administrator, did not send the background package. All they did was send a piece of paper saying, "We need $40 million," roughly. They had no follow-up, and this was in January. No follow-up, but here's the biggest thing. This plan, this action, this, what was taken by our county administrator, this is why it'll fail. It'll fail because it's inconsistent with the county's sewer and water plan and the comp plan. This is, makes us look like a JV team down here. They think they're playing master chess, these builders and developers, playing master chess. They're just shooting marbles. And I'm going to say this. I said it before, and I'm going to say it again. There is no Semper Fi coming out of that administrator's office for the, the hard-working people of our county who are going to vote in a few months. Thanks kindly.
Anyone else? And there's nobody on the Zoom call.
Ms. Gallons, anything that staff does, I take full responsibility for, so.
I don't care. You go ahead. I'm going to tell you. Go ahead and take full responsibility. But somebody has to be responsible for getting everybody all cranked up that we're going to put in a pipe to dump sewer 25 miles down the road.
I understand. I understand.
All right, that's fine, but I'm telling you, with the state of Maryland, the Department of Energy, the tolling name, in writing, in writing.
Anybody else have public comment? Nobody on the phone? And there's nobody on the phone. All right, so that brings us to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Gadway.
Wow. Bear with me just a second. I'm trying to figure out where I want to go with this.
I can go someplace else.
I, I, I'm
If you're not prepared?
No, I, I was, I was prepared until about 45 seconds ago.
I can go.
I'm going to, yeah, go ahead, because I don't know if I want to go there or not.
Mr. Hart? Okay. So, had a friend of mine pass away, I'll leave her, leave her name out of it. You know, we've had COVID, which has dominated our thoughts and our attention for the last couple of years, and obviously, when we see with Ukraine out there. But she, she died from, from drugs and, and from opiates, and, and I had another friend of mine, another young girl, two years ago. And both, both these girls, very young, in the prime of their life, I mean, just, and, and it's still out there. You know, it's easy to get distracted by everything else, but these, these are, these are our kids, you know, and, boy, I never saw that coming. Went to school with her mom, and, you know, just no different than any of the next-door kid. I mean, I just blown away, so I just, you know, us, our, our prayers to go out and, and to, and to, you know, I know we still got a lot of groups working, you know, with, with drug abuse out there and stuff, but it's, I don't want it to kind of get off the attention, you know, of, that, that, that's still out there, you know, with all the things out there that, so, but I'll leave their name out to, for their privacy. Had, on the good side, Kevin and his staff did a fantastic job. I'm very excited about the, the direction they're going with the TV station there. I, I said it before, if you're not watching those videos, you're missing out. We have an in-house actor, Daryl, who is outstanding. If Daryl can't make you laugh, you can't be made laugh, okay? I'm telling you. So, you don't have a funny bone if Daryl can't make you laugh. Outstanding videos. Learned something about my backyard watching a Five Points series on there. So, it, it, it's, it's not like, you know, like some of the, in, in the past, some of the stuff, they looked like tacky and looked like it's done in somebody's backyard. No, these are so professional-looking. I mean, you think you're watching, like, National Geographic or something, they're, they're fantastic. So, I want to commend his staff, and, and I think we're going to really see some cool things out of there. And then I, Saturday, attended the First Osprey Festival down here. I can't thank Linda enough for everything she did. She was very instrumental in helping them with, with getting that off the ground, and it was very well attended.
Did you wear an Osprey costume?
No, it was, I would have. I would have. You know me. I'm a ham. I, I never pass up an opportunity. I did. Somebody already beat me to it, and, so, you know, I never pass up a chance to ham it up, you know. But, but it was cool. I, I hadn't walked Drumpoint Beach in a while. You know, I grew up on that beach, and actually, I had to call my brother just because you were talking about erosion. So, I don't know how well you know Drumpoint Beach, but when you come up towards a point, there's always a, a spot there where the bay would wash into, like, this little pond. And, boy, if that, and it was times where it would seal itself up, but, I mean, if it does that anymore, I, I mean, if, if it opens up anymore, I'd really be surprised because I, I've never seen it built up. So much beach is gone, and I hadn't, like I said, I hadn't walked that beach in, in a while. And, but they, it was really well attended. It was nice that so many people came out for wildlife and stuff, as we should, you know, and it was, it was, it was really cool. But, but I thought of you two was some of our erosion conversations with how much beach is gone from when I was a kid, so. Yeah, yeah, so, that's it, guys.
Thank you. Commissioner McConkey?
Um, I have nothing this week.
Mr. Gadway?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend Veterans Commission Meeting. I'm looking forward to the next one of those coming up soon. With that being said, I would like to commend all veterans from all branches of service, from the Coast Guard to the Marine Corps, Semper Fi and Semper Peratus. Thank you. Those, we, all of us had the opportunity to be at the Calvert Broadcast grand opening last week. Last Tuesday, it was a really fun time. Thanks to T-Bone and Heather, we're, and everybody else pushing forward the YouTube channel. We are now at 697 YouTube subscribers. That is a mirror, for those needing the math assistance, 303 to go to our 1,000 goal before end of fiscal year.
You can do it, Chris.
We can do that. So. When you have an opportunity, please go onto YouTube and Calvert County Government, click on the subscribe button and tickle the bell notification for when new videos are uploaded.
Chris, you should go door-to-door, knock on the door and say, hey, can I come and use your TV for about five minutes? Go on their YouTube, hit it, and, and I think you do it 303 times, we're going to have it.
There we go. So, kudos to everybody in there. So, kudos to everybody in there. Please use Daryl instead of me.
Yeah, maybe Daryl should go door-to-door.
Yeah, exactly. This Saturday, I believe, up Chesapeake Beach, there's an extravaganza, so take a look at that, Kellam's Field. And just in closing, I again want to ask the school board, I asked them this a few weeks ago, I'm going to ask them yet again, will you please stop muting your microphones during the Pledge of Allegiance and allow the people that are watching it online to be able to hear the Pledge of Allegiance? Because some of the people, believe it or not, actually take part of that at home. They actually take part of that. So, that's in addition to lifting this 10-speaker limit, Pledge of Allegiance being able to be heard on the school board videos. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiems?
I have nothing to report this week, sir.
So, I don't have, I attended the broadcast live grand opening ribbon-cutting, whatever you want to call it, the other night. I was actually surprised how many people showed up. I don't know what the head count was, but it must have been...
It had a lot to do with the donuts.
How many people were there, Kevin? Yeah, I was going to say 100. I was really surprised, I have to admit. McConkey said it was the donuts, but the donuts...
We should do a telethon from there. We should do a telethon, you know, where they can call in and, you know...
These two guys can't wait to get on camera. That's all they're talking about. Weathermen, marathons. Right, right. Geez. I have a life.
We might be able to fix the budget crisis.
Hey, there you go.
Or make it worse.
They might pay us to get off there.
I think I heard today there's going to be an Easter egg hunt at Holling Point Park Sunday, right? Yes. And on Saturday, there are tours at the Mack Lab down at Jefferson Patterson Park, if anybody's interested, want to give them a shout out. And just, you know, if you hadn't noticed already, the budget weighs on me heavily. And today, you all got a taste of what's in front of us, and unlike Commissioner Wiems, I haven't been through it before, and it's extremely difficult and a challenge for all of us, because services are going to be impacted. We all realize that. But at the end of the day, we have a responsibility to spend your money efficiently and effectively, and, you know, we have to do whatever we have to do. So, I just ask you all to bear with us as we get through this challenge this year, and maybe next year it'll be worse, but I live for today, and with one budget at a time, please. So, Commissioner Wiems, that's all I have. Commissioner Wiems, you have a motion for me?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel matters, property acquisition, and threatened litigation pursuant to Section 3-305B, 1, 2, B3, and B8. And I'm going to be taking my B4 later.
There you go.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, then we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, opposed. Motion carries. So, everyone, you have a great day.
Thank you.